Hey. I was so late this morning, it was ridiculous.
But no, but generally Mondays, people work from home, so it's good to see Mondays, I've seen the trains are less crowded.
Good folks. We're spending also things you're seeing. Exactly on the review session.
Make sure you're. Cat.
Yeah, that's right.
I can proceed?
Yes.
Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Please be reminded to note testimonies taken during the review session, and please know for the record that Commissioner Sheta is joining us remotely. My screen is not showing up on me still. The review session thing's not showing up. Yeah, don't matter. The first items up are adjournments, two sixty three sixty seven B Z one oh eight oh two Otis Avenue, Queens. Item number two, twenty twenty four twenty three B Z three thirty four Douglas Street, Brooklyn. Item number three, twenty twenty four thirty four B Z eight fifteen King's Highway, Brooklyn. Should I announce the ones that are Tuesday or we um?
You can announce it for Tuesday also.
There are two adjournments for the March twenty fifth hearing. Calendar, that is twenty twenty three dash twelve B Z two thirty fifteen Merrick Boulevard, Queens. And twenty twenty four ten dash ten B Z sixteen seventy nine sixty third Street, Brooklyn. I think that's it. You have the other one in the market.
Which one? Which is the?
And also twenty twenty four fourteen A twenty three Zerelli Port Staten Island.
Right.
Okay, decision items. Four ninety nine twenty nine B Z volume four two forty eight seventy Horace Harding Expressway, Queens.
Okay. So we did receive the Community Board vote, and it voted to approve with all conditions that were stipulated in prior grants. A job application has been filed at D O B to correct the width of the curb cut on Marathon Parkway. And if applicant states that within sixty days, the curb cut will be corrected. I believe Commissioner Hartley, that was a question, were you satisfied with it?
Yes, I'm satisfied.
Okay, so in that case, if everybody is satisfied, I want to make a motion to approve with for a ten year term with the following conditions, that the site shall be maintained free of debris and graffiti. Certificate of occupancy shall be obtained within twelve months from the date of the grant. And the curb cut along Marathon Parkway shall be restored to the approved with prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabetta? Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Ayes.
Application has been granted. Item number five, eight eight seven five four B Z volume four, two eighteen oh one Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, um. This is um. We did receive the revised statement of fact and the revised D O B objection sheet. I think that was the only thing that we needed. This is an extension of time, so motion to if everybody's okay. Motion to approve for two year extension of time to obtain the certificate of occupancy.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number six, five oh eight eighty B Z sixty two twenty fourteenth Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, so this one we are, I'm gonna make um. We have received all the necessary information, we're just waiting for a sign off from D E P. So I would recommend we second call this for tomorrow, towards the end of the day.
Item number seven, twenty twenty two eighty eight B Z three eighteen Seguin Avenue, Staten Island.
All right, um, that's the motion to reopen, um.
Motion to reopen.
Oh. Well, they made a submission, a submission was made, they have revised the chain. I don't want to just, I don't know how much applicant, how much we have reviewed it. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. The motion to reopen, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Aye.
So I don't know if everybody had a chance, the applicant provided a submission. And now the proposed project has been scaled down significantly. Previously, the project was was recommending an eight thousand three hundred sixty two square foot of development, it has been scaled down more than half. And and is with that, the proportionate amount of on-street parking, onsite parking space, so twelve parking spaces is being proposed. Um, the the applicant has revised the layout and and has tried to address the findings associated with the special permit. So I I think there are few little changes that the plan needs to have. Um, but overall, I think it's going in the right direction. So if you want to discuss it, we can discuss it now, or we can schedule it for a hearing in April. And have a a much more robust discussion and for the applicant to respond. Which of a way you want to do it, I'm okay.
Don't we need to have a notice for a hearing to discuss it?
No, uh, not for our executive discussion, but we, the applicant, you're absolutely right, the applicant, we do have to send another notification for a hearing, and I don't, I don't think April will be too soon, because it will be less than twenty days, so we'll have to schedule it for May then.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed.
We'll have to schedule it for May.
May.
Yeah, we can't do April. Because the twenty, it's the, our rules says twenty day notification, so we'll fall short of that. Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Um, one of the things I want the applicant to be careful about, there is a little bit of a typo in the zoning resolution section. The applicable zoning resolution section, it refers to zoning resolution section twenty three thirty five. It says that the minimum lottery and lot width regulations pursuant to section twenty thirty five. As part of the, all the changes that has happened, recent Z H O changes, that that section is no longer applicable, it actually is section twenty four dash oh five. Buildings containing certain community facility is the section that is applicable, so. Please make all the connections accordingly and and if any submission needs to be made, please do that. Um, I think those are my comments initially on the take. Any any thoughts or suggestions?
Just a quick question. I think that the previous grant proposal was eight thousand three hundred sixty three, and the new total is forty eight hundred.
Forty eight hundred, so it's a little bit more than.
It's almost, it's it's nearly.
Yeah, nearly half, yeah.
Are we now satisfied with the application?
Yeah, and I think the layout is much, much better, and it creates less friction within the site as well, because the prior one, we were having confusion.
So. Building.
One thing I did look at the plan, that it seems that the site dips in the middle, I don't know if that's a natural dip or that has been created. And if it is being done, I'm not very familiar with the South Richmond Special District. But it is in the Special District, and there are some slope conditions that needs to be maintained in topography. So please make sure that you are complying with those requirements of the South Richmond Special District. Uh, because the Special District also has some certain guidelines and parameters. So whatever plan is being proposed, make sure you're also complying with that, unless it is directing the special, the South Richmond Special District is directing you to any of the sections in Article Two. Okay, so I would say this is, it's it's moving in the right direction. So at at the May hearing, we can do a little bit more tweaking of some of the changes. But a hearing notice should go out to the Community Board and to the neighbors.
Okay.
Okay.
Go to end of May.
Um, we can do early May, what is the, what is our?
Five, six? Yes.
You have five, six cases? I mean, yeah. I I just wanna look at our lineup for me.
I think the nineteenth will be better, but.
Nineteenth take be better? Let me just see. How long do you need? It's will be one month?
Yeah, it's about one month, so I think we're good. Yeah, we'll go, it's to May five, six. May sixth?
I mean, actually, we have a lot of cases on May fifth, sixth. We have a lot of cases on May fifteenth, do nineteenth.
Okay.
Do nineteenth then.
Be kind of. Hold on?
Okay, yes.
Oh, could I just?
Sure, go ahead.
Should reconcile their zoning analysis with their statement, because the zoning analysis says four thousand four hundred and thirty eight square feet, and the statement says forty eight hundred square feet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the, you need to do other things still in the zoning analysis?
Oh, can you repeat it?
Yeah, I said they need to correct other things in the zoning analysis, this is, this is an R three X. And in the zoning analysis, it said that F A residential, there is nothing there, the maximum permitting is nothing, is zero, it can be zero, I believe, right?
Okay. All right.
And the F A R is is, again, it says nothing for the residential. So they should, they should add these numbers from the applicable zoning resolution section for the R three X.
Versus what is proposed, so they should indicate what is permitted for residential, what is
Yes.
Community facility, and what is proposed is zero residential and all community facility.
Yes, for the proposed, that's right, but for the maximum permitted, there are nothing there.
All right, okay, all right. Also, I want rendering of this building from the streetscape, that is one thing I felt was missing. I want a streetscape diagram of Seguin, which shows the abutting properties and superimposed with where the building lies. And the reason I was asking for the topography also is that I hope it's not going to create any um. I mean, if there's going to be a retaining wall, we need to know what kind of retaining wall is going to be there, and how high it's going to be. Because there's a certain amount of buffering that would be needed along the residential lot line, the parking, parking spaces are all abutting the residential lot line. So do provide a little bit more detail on those aspects. Are there any um onsite lighting? If there is, need to provide a lumen study to make sure that this light will spread, is going to be contained within the residential section. I think those are, those are my questions, yeah.
I thought there is a a streetscape there. For Seguin, I believe.
It's a plan, but not in an elevation.
No, I'm talking about, let me check, I'm I'm opening the drawer right now, I'm looking at it. I I thought I I saw something for. Yeah, page, what page is this? It's drawing A dash zero zero, page nineteen of twenty six.
Okay, wonder.
And I I didn't like the elevation, because it's it's way far from the existing residential, it doesn't match the existing residential action. You you wanna misshare it?
Yeah, if you can, because my computer is.
Sure, my my computer is doing the same. Yeah. But. Yeah, I'm not sure if you see my screen now.
Here we go.
Yes.
Ah, that's a streetscape, huh?
Yeah.
I, that's a streetscape, all right, okay.
Yeah, this is page nineteen of twenty six, and if you look at the elevation here, like I said, I I ah, come on. The computer is driving me. Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And 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 like I said, the, if you look at the elevation for the building and compare it to the existing, it's it's, it's kind of like for me, it's far from from the existing, like, building topography, it's that, the shape of the facade is 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 way far, I believe, it's, this is not my my like area, but that's what I felt, maybe I'm wrong.
No, I I, the building is set back significantly, the drawings, the, one of the problems I was having with the drawing is trying to identify what is the required setbacks from side yard and the front yard, the line weight was not very good. But I I figured it out eventually, and the building is set back quite a bit from the property line. And I don't know if that string dimension has been provided in the plan, if not, that should be indicated very clearly. What is the distance from the property line? Um, uh, because that is going to be critical also as part of the whole streetscape improvement that has been. Okay, anything else?
Just that, in the, the last time we heard this in July of last year, they said they wanted to stick to the pre-Z E O zoning.
Okay.
No, they 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 can.
No, they're applying under the, what is the, this is the new special permit, the number that is being requested.
They are entitled to proceed under the new zoning to the extent it was filed before June sixth. Under the old zone, thank you.
But, okay, so there is the confusion, so then they have to refer to the old special permit number.
Yes.
I think they're referring to the new special permit number, and if you are, then you have to stick to the, everything that is new. I don't think you can mix and.
Other.
Right.
Yes. No objection, but they do have to be consistent in sticking to the old zoning or the new zoning.
Right.
Through and through.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else?
We good?
Yep.
Move on?
Yep.
Continued hearing, three forty eight fifty one B Z eighty eight twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. Just give me a second. So we received an updated Community Board three recommendation for an approval with updated conditions. And the conditions are that the applicant provides a beauty enhancements at the frontage of the gasoline station with landscaping. Work shall be stipulated and confirmed with D E P for soil remediation for removal of existing gasoline storage tank. Charging stations shall be e-bike compatible. Provide adequate lighting during the operation of the gas service station's dispensers and gasoline pump islands. Plans to beautify the interior of the station shall be provided for Community Board review. Storage of motor oil waste debris shall be kept in a safe location and free from potential safety hazards to the general public and employees. Alcoholic beverages shall not be sold in the new convenience store in any form or fashion. Um, so applicant, I I want the applicant to respond to these comments that Community Board has provided. As I understand it, all site improvements, including removal of U S Ts, have to comply with applicable regulations, state and city regulations. And and the applicant has to secure required approvals for any of the removals of U S Ts. So I hope that responds to that that question. Now disposition and containment of motor oil shall also be pursuant to the appropriate regulations. Now, I'm not sure to what extent board can impose conditions on what items can be sold in the convenience store. Um, so it has to apply with all the D C A permits and regulatory requirements, that is my understanding. Now applicant has revised the plan, the building is proposed to be expanded to the rear lot line as initially, and as initially proposed, along the western end. The proposed increase in floor area would be thousand thirty one square foot. I want the applicant to ensure if the proposed auto repair bay, which will also be extended to the rear lot line, has been included in the thousand thirty one square feet. Assuming the calculation as provided is correct, pursuant to zoning resolution section eleven dash four one two, maximum fifty percent of floor area existing as of December fifteen nineteen sixty one is permitted. And based on, assuming this thousand thirty one is correct, then the proposed addition will be within that fifty percent limit. However, the statement of fact, nor the plan, said discusses the applicability of eleven dash four one two and meeting the fifty percent requirement, so the statement of fact, statement of fact has to be revised. Since the building is extending to the rear lot line, applicant needs to ensure the noise from the mechanical damage that is proposed to be located on the roof very close to the residential unit will be attenuated pursuant to all the codes. Or if there is a way to move it little away, away from the residential, that would be, and and provide the proper attenuation. Uh, the revised plan addresses some of Board's comments, including removal of one curb cut located nearest to the intersection of eighty ninth street. And replace those two curb cuts on eighty ninth street with one curb cut. That will be an enlargement of the existing curb cut to a width of thirty foot. Air pump and vacuum, as suggested by the board, will be relocated away from the residential building along eighty ninth street and would be located next to the one-story commercial use, which is a tire store. Um, and and I think two E V charging stations are proposed. Um, applicant is also proposing a masonry brick wall trash enclosure with metal door. My concern is with the placement of this enclosure. It may lead to, the way it is located, there is a gap between the wall, there is landscaping. So there's the wall at the lot line, there's a landscaping area, then there is a space behind the trash enclosure, and then the trash enclosure with an A D A parking in space. My concern is that space behind the trash enclosure can become an area for misuse. And since there isn't any fence around it, likelihood, either way, I think it is going to be, it can be misused. So I, my recommendation, and and this is not a recommendation, I'm directing the applicant to do this. Since you're proposing to expand the building all the way to the rear lot line, contain the trash enclosure within that expanded portion of the building. And the trash enclosure can open towards eighty ninth street. What that does is that it allows for two tandem parking spaces, one regular parking spaces and the A D A parking spaces in front of it. The reason I'm saying that is that when I looked at the maneuverability plan, there are two parking spaces that are going to be located next to the auto repair. But the maneuverability plan shows that it would be in the way of vehicular movement going through the site or to the gas pump. So by taking one of those parking spaces and putting it in front of the um, putting, creating a tandem parking where the trash enclosure is, um, you eliminate that conflict of vehicular movement. And at the same time, the trash enclosure is contained within the site, which will be accessible. And there'll be less chance of misuse of that space behind the structure. Um, and if needed, you, I think the fence can be partially extended along eighty ninth street to prevent vehicular spilling onto the sidewalk, or you can provide bollards, whichever way to contain it. Um, applicant is also proposing a fence that will consist of composite of plywood fastened to the fence. And the fence is a chain link fence, I'm not sure if that is possible, if that can be done, and structurally, how that will stand. So I I I, it wasn't clear to me, so I would like the applicant to clarify that, and if they can provide a sample, that would be very helpful. Um, applicant is proposing to provide seven parking spaces, though five is required. And and the hours of operation for the auto repair is proposed to be from seven A M to eight P M, Mondays through Saturday. Um, so I looked through prior resolution, and it seems the board had never placed any conditions on the hours of operation for this site. So this is a question I have for my fellow board members. Given its adjacency to the residential use, are we okay with uh, seven A M to eight P M, Mondays through Saturdays? Or would we want to reduce the hours on Saturday at least to five P M? Um, I think Commissioner Yoon had asked to indicate the area within the building where the tires would be stored. I don't think I quite saw that response, but I will let Commissioner Yoon weigh in on that. Um, those are my question, Vice Chair Shabetta? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I have no additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ashada? Uh, can't hear you.
Yep, I'm sorry, I just unmuted myself, thank you, I I share your comments, and regarding the hour of operation, I'm I'm okay with like seven to eight weekdays and 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 seven to five on Saturday.
Okay, um.
Chair, sorry, do, when you speak, move closer to the mic.
Um, Commissioner Yoon?
Thank you.
Sorry, oh, go ahead.
Okay, I had a couple of comments, the site plan still calls a a new chain link fence, but then in the detail shows a plywood fence. And so for the chair's question, I think we just need more clarification on what you're proposing for the actual fence, and you need to make sure the drawings show it consistently. The, um, your cellar plan is not labeled correctly, it's under the roof plan. The maneuver, maneuverability plan shows cars will drive into the parking spaces, so that should be adjusted. I think you could make it work, but the graphics show the cars driving through them. Um, think there was a request for photos of the fence condition on the lot line. And did not see them, unless I missed them. I also didn't see an indication of where the tires would be stored on the interior, as the chair mentioned. The air and vac location in its new proposed location, I'm gonna share screen. Just to go away. So here, um, the issue I see with this is that if there is a car filling up with gas and a car charging, there doesn't seem to be any space for a car to actually park and use the air pump and vacuum without parking on the sidewalk. Hmm, so I think we need to see at least the outline of a car and how it would be able to use this service without blocking the sidewalk. Um, and then Chair, I wanted to ask you a bit more about what, maybe we can look at this together?
Hmm.
What you were proposing, so instead of having the trash enclosure here, you're saying move it here?
Yeah.
Or or here?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah, wherever, whatever works for for them, any of those, I would prefer the first location. Um, because I think in the back, hmm, somewhere they have a boiler room or something, I don't know if that's the existing one, so, um.
But then you're proposing a second parking space here?
Yeah.
But then the only way to get to it is to drive.
No, it would be more like a tandem parking, so typically what, yeah, typically what would happen, generally, it would be, um, uh, you know, it would be the, an employee car or a car that is almost not going to move, we have seen situations like that. And this way, it kind of, um, you know, and and during. And this way it kind of um, you know, and and during trash pickup, eh you know, that car can can be moved. I mean, it's all coordinated with the applicant.
Then there have to be, I would think.
Yeah.
Bollards, because this is gonna be definitely used.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Either extend the chain length, uh either extend the fence or a bollard.
Okay, okay.
Which were.
I just wanted to understand what the.
Yeah.
Post was, okay.
And oh, and regarding the fence, I think, yeah, I did want to, I wanted to know the condition of the fences, especially that are going to remain. Uh, not the portion where the building is going to extend to, because that's going to be solid wall, but the uh the remaining fences. So that that is the question I had.
Okay. Um, I think that.
Thank you.
Were, those were my comments.
Yes. Actually, I want to go back to Vice Chair Shabeta and Commissioner Hartley Brown. Do you have any comments on the hours? The proposed hours? Are you okay with the Saturday hours that they have proposed, which is seven to eight P M Mondays through Saturdays?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So you're okay with the seven to eight? Mondays through Saturday. And Commissioner um Yun, are you okay with that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay. The majority wins. Okay, yes, please. Thank you.
Item number nine, three seventy four seventy one B Z two O five eleven Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Um, so um board did receive an email from the community board in January, and community board had voted to oppose this application. Um, so I just want to make sure if everybody was aware of it. This was in January we had received it. Applicant was asked to provide a detailed history, especially with regards to the portion um of um the site that is in the R three two district. Now, based on the history provided, in nineteen seventy five, board had approved an amendment to enlarge the lot area to provide accessory employee parking extending into the residential district. Um, applicant provided clarification regarding D O B's purview. The proposed enlargement is located within um the C two two portion. And per D O B's review, the auto showroom is a permitted use in a C two two A uh in a C two two as a district as of right. So D O B also determined that the variance is required for the portion of the lot that is located within the R three two uh district. You uh for it to be used as an accessory parking for a commercial operation. Applicant further states that the parking area in the R three two portion is not a required parking and is voluntary. Um, I looked through the prior um B S A resolutions. Um, as explained by the applicant at the last hearing and also in its cover letter, the existing building is a pre nineteen sixty one building, and the parking requirement is applicable to the post nineteen sixty one building, and the proposed enlargement would then require only one accessory parking space, which is viable. So um this required parking is not a required for zoning, it's a requirement of what the applicant is requesting as part of its business operations. So it's it's a voluntary, it's rather than the, we keep using the word required, but it's a voluntary. Um, uh, uh, uh. Uh, it's a parking space that's being provided and not as part of the requirement. So applicant has revised the plan. It provides the parking requirement for the site. Um, and it's proposing to maintain sixteen accessory parking for customers and employees only. No cars will be stored overnight and gates will be locked and empty during non-business hours. Uh, a trash enclosure will be maintained in the R three two portion enclosed by a six foot high chain link fence, and it is indicated in the plan. Um, the existing site condition photo that was provided um of for the parking lot um was satisfactory to me. It was taken on a Thursday um on June thirtieth twenty twenty five. So based on this photo, the site looks in, it's maintained in good condition. It is um and there were no um vehicles parked there. So I really am, I have nothing more to say. I'm satisfied with this application at this time, unless something else is raised by.
We got an email just now. Yeah, Carlo sent an email with photos from, I think, a neighbor.
They've seen the alleged um uh pictures of alleged violations and complaints. Uh sidewalk parking included. We can, we can pull it up.
Okay, if you can. Okay. So ca- can somebody share?
I will share it. Yeah, one second. Oh, Jello's got it.
And just note for the record of the text, um the annotations are just allegations. They don't represent the board's position.
The date of the photo.
This is December.
So it was December twelfth, and the photo that the applicant provided is dated January thirtieth. So um it's likely the applicant has responded and has corrected.
But the first. The first one is from February seventh.
Yeah, there are two in the beginning, in January and February.
Yeah.
Okay.
The first two.
Okay, the applicant should respond to to this. Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes.
As this just had come in and I just uh sent it to the board members, I have not shared it with the applicant. Shall I afford it?
Please do.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, Vice Chair Shabeta. Uh, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Other than um the applicant answering the questions brought up by the um photos, I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, first, I want to say that I didn't hear Commissioner Vice Chair Shabata when he spoke. I'm not sure if I'm the only one who wasn't able to hear it or it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
So if if you want to repeat your statement.
I was just noting that there were um photos submitted by a uh um a gentleman named Chung that the applicant needed to respond to.
Thank you. And I have nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner um Yun?
I have nothing further.
Where's the chair? All right. So applicant, please uh do look through those plans, uh the photos that's been submitted, and some of them are as recent as February. And uh at the hearing, be prepared to respond to those uh comments. Uh, re- respond to the photographs and the conditions um that the community is raising concerns about.
Will that?
Yes.
Item number ten, twenty six ninety three B Z eight eighty Conny Allen Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay.
There were submissions on Friday, just saying.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
We don't have a community vote yet on this application. Um, so uh please um please reach out to the community board um and uh and get an idea on the timeline status.
Okay.
Um, applicant provided this response to the comments that were raised at the initial hearing. Um, I'll go through each one of them. Uh, while the plans have been revised, photos have been provided uh of the vehicular accessways uh being chained after nine P M. Um, the cub, um, I I think my first question is um applicant is proposing to amend the hours of operation and uh and that is extend the hours of operation to seven A M. Um, uh to eleven P M Mondays through Fridays and seven A M to one A M Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, no, no, it's seven A M to one A M, seven days a week. That's what was in the letter on Friday, correct?
Oh, well, that's a change.
That's a change.
Yeah.
So that's a change. Okay. I, okay. Seven A M to?
To one P, one A M?
One A M.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. Okay, that's a big change, because the initial grant was seven A M to eleven P M Sundays through Thursdays. And seven A M to midnight, Fridays to Sunday. Now it is seven days, seven A M to one A M.
Right, the operator will chain the lot during off hours.
Okay, now, let's, I'll jump to that. Applicant in a stated that they will chain the entryway a- after nine P M, which to me does not make sense. If you're proposing to have an hour of seven A M to one A M, what is happening after nine P M to one A M? Are people breaking through the chain uh or 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 it's just a? How are people are 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 it's or is it just walk in? Nobody can drive into the parking space. So there is a, there's a mismatch in the statement and the operation. Um, so I also found the cover letter uh and the statement of fact confusing with regards to the delivery schedule. Uh, so the applicant needs to clarify the hours of operation for the drive-through, restaurant and delivery, uh all of them uh separately. Uh. The the threshold question the board had asked uh wa- uh the applicant to respond was to establish if the proposed enlargement of the building and the drive-through would be within, will be, that that will be within the R five district. Would it increase the degree of variance? Um, applicant's latest plan does show um the twenty five foot distance from the R five uh district. And that the building, while the applicant did respond that the building, the proposed enlarged portion of the building will be within that twenty five foot distance, but it did not respond to the fact that the realigned drive-through will not be within twenty five foot. Eh, a good part of it falls outside the twenty five foot um distance from the C eight zoning district. So the plan has to be revised. The enlarged portion of the commercial use and the drive-through, both of it needs to be within twenty five feet from C eight district. Uh, so uh the applicant needs to go back to the drawing board. Um, regarding the landscaping along the northern lot line, it seems all the trees that are indicated in the photos are there, uh abating, um that are abating um the that northern lot line is located in the residential portion. But my question to the applicant was, is there any ground planting or ground covering along the property's northern line, uh lot line? If there is, what improvement is being proposed along that? Also, at the last meeting, applicant had stated that the through lane uh will be striped uh and will have a different material or one of them, the drive-through will have a different material, whichever way. That will distinguish between the through lane and the drive-through. Um, it's not clear from the drawings, so please indicate it in the plan in terms of how those two lanes are going to be separated. Uh, because I had suggested using a bollard, but that seems to be not a favored option. But if you're going to use any of these other materials, that needs to be indicated in the plan. So those are my comments. Um, and I would say, I for one, I'm not thrilled about the idea of uh of the drive-through being open for till one A M. There is a residential building right abating the site. Um, and uh restaurant may be open till one A M, but I'm not sure about the drive-through. So I do want uh commissioners to weigh in on the revised new timeline. Um, Vice Chair, um Shabeta.
Well, thank you, Chair. I was also very confused as to the hours with the with the idea of the gate being closed at nine P M. I'm not sure if that in that meant that they intended that at nine P M the uh drive-through would close. Um, but still, I didn't under, I was confused by it. I'd like that to be clarified. I have nothing further.
Yeah. And what about the hours of operation?
I I also agree that one A M may be ambitious uh and.
For drive.
For drive-through.
And that's for weekdays and weekends?
That's for weekdays and weekends.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
So I had previous concerns about the increase in intensity of use in the R five. And so they clarified for me that only a hundred and twenty seven square feet actually of the building extends into the residential zone, and it'll extend five feet into the residential zone versus eight and a half feet previously, but for a greater width. However, that extension that was previously in that R zone was just a trash enclosure. And now it's an active restaurant back there, plus they've added a trash enclosure on the residential lot line. And so that is an intensification of the use and more of a nuisance to the residences behind the building. So I would like them to address ways to ameliorate that. And I also agree with you on the photo showing the lot chained off at nine, even though the restaurant and everything was still open, because it didn't even allow you to go in and park.
Right.
Even if you weren't using the drive-through. So that was just odd.
Yeah.
And um one A M. I'm not sure I'm in agreement that one A M is a good idea for the drive-through, because it is also going to intensify the effects on the residents behind.
You're right. Yes, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I want to thank them first for fixing like a lot of my like issues uh on the previous hearing. Uh, second, on the hour of operation, I agree that one of one A M is is kind of like late. Uh, I I I believe eleven would be fine. Uh, the the other thing is I wanted to like mention is that if you look at the pens, the acoustical fans, they indicated the endpoints on the plans. I can, I can, to explain myself, I can put it in the screen. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Here they put a, this is one of the endpoints here. The other endpoint is is right here. Let me, let me just zoom a little bit. Yeah, so this is endpoint one, this is endpoint two, and they are talking about the total quantity of the fence is two fifty five linear foot. I did like roughly scale this plus this plus this, and I believe it's close to maybe over three hundred. So I would like them to either like put the total length, and I I don't prefer that. Just take the total, the total length out and just like specify the endpoints, the start and the end of that acoustic fencing. You don't need to put the quantity. This is not like a short drone or something like that. Uh, that's all what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I was also confused by the hours of operation and the chaining off of the parking lot. Um, but I think we, there was some clarification of delivery service in the statement effects, and I think that was based on comments from the last hearing, but I think we also were asking about truck deliveries and when those were going to occur, and I didn't see that addressed in the statement effects. Um, and as the chair asked for a clear description of the drive-through, the restaurant, delivery service for the restaurant should be spelled out. And then in addition, we need to understand again trash pickup time, truck delivery time. Um, the section on the A V C is still not drawn to scale, and I think this is maybe the third or fourth time in general that I've asked for a scale, a scaled section. Um, not on this case, we've only heard it twice, but I definitely asked for it the last time. So please draw your section of the A V C to scale, because this is a critical part of what we look at. Um, and for them to be so grossly out of scale makes it difficult for us to understand the uh what's actually happening on the site. Um. Um, so the the only adjacent residential neighbor is the one to the north.
Hmm.
And to the west, we have this alley that's used for um a driveway, I think, for the interior of the block. So I didn't have as great of concerns about the encroachment into the R five as proposed, simply because it's quite some distance before um there's any residential uses on the western side of the project. That's that's my piece.
Good point.
Yeah, I I agree with you on that one, Commissioner Yun, though the applicant needs to go through the statement and make that um clear uh clarify how this proposed uh shift into the R five of the drive-through and the trash enclosure will not uh create additional neighborhood context, and it's still the minimum that is needed um and will not be an encumbrance from a neighborhood character point of view.
I understand.
And
I'm also thinking about like road and control. I actually went to a fast food restaurant and I was waiting in the drive-through and I looked over at a trash enclosure that actually wasn't by residential and the amount of mice that were just darting all through the enclosure in and out.
You didn't pick up food from.
Yeah, this is before.
I went to the window and I said, I just want you guys to know, you need road and control. Take a look over there. And it was like, it was like a celebration. It was a party. So I I want to hear that even though there are no houses just behind, that they have a robust road and control plan in place.
Okay, um, this is all very helpful. Actually, what confused me on the drive-through was it says the delivery will be done Saturdays and Sundays, and then it also says three times a week. Uh, and the store closes at eleven P M, which is based on the earliest uh statement because um but all delivery orders are placed by ten forty-five P M for pickup by eleven P M. So I just found the whole statement very confused.
Yeah, I was, it didn't make any sense.
It didn't make sense. Only what what are you picking up? Aren't you delivering?
Yeah.
Like
I think it's like those Uber Eats guys, maybe.
Okay, but then um then the one P M thing, what is that?
It seems like a series of straightforward operations that have been made quite muddled.
Yeah, so I think they need to break it up into all the different operations and provide the hours of operation for each one of them. Um, okay, thank you. Next case, please.
Commissioner Yun, when you say the A V.
Sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, when when you say A V C section, you're talking about the menu board section, right?
Uh, yes.
Correct. Okay.
This is on page.
Fourteen, the final page.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it says not to scale. I don't know why.
Well, it has historically been not to scale, but I've asked for it to be drawn to scale because for us, this is exactly like we see it in the plan, but we also rely on this depiction
Yes.
to understand the actual condition between the menu board and the lot line.
Yes.
And if it's completely off, out of scale, then it's not very helpful to us.
Yes.
Um, I understand that it's a di it initial initially started as a diagram, but I am saying we need it to be an actual architectural section to scale that matches the plan so that we understand what we're looking at.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I think the architect is um, who's the architect? Gerard Gerard Jones. He is, he, I think he's one of the architects who does a lot of drive-throughs. So I think whatever comment is being stated for one drive-through, please carry it forward with all the other ones, um, because I don't think we we are going to change of especially with regards to A V C and the drawing requirements. Thank you.
Item number?
Yes, please. Sorry.
It's okay. Item number eleven, one fifteen ninety-four B Z, volume three, twenty-four seventy Bedford, Emmy, Brooklyn.
Okay, so we did receive a community board recommendations with conditions that the hours of operations shall be seven A M to eight P M. Uh, no parking on uh or otherwise obstructing the sidewalk, no work on the street, no storage of vehicles on the street, no bodywork or paint on the sidewalk. So regarding community boards uh hours of operation, I'm not sure if it's a typo or not because the applicant is maintaining the board's uh maintaining board's conditions uh with regards to the hours of operations, which uh was uh from nine A M to six P M Mondays through Saturday, and the applicant is not proposing to change that. So um, which is more restrictive than what the com- community board has suggested. I just want to be on record stating that. So an applicant is, as I said, is not seeking to amend prior board condition. An email confirmation from Parks Department has been provided regarding the request to install Street Three, which was requested back in February of twenty twenty-five, and also a follow-up email for a status update. Uh, on this one, I will strongly uh urge the applicant to work with the community board um and um to get the get Parks Department to pri uh you know uh prioritize this because this will address some of co- community board's concerns also that has been raised. Um, interior photos of tires uh being stored inside the building has been provided. Um, it looks very organized and well-maintained. Also received notarized letters of support from eight residents from the immediate abutting uh blocks. Um, a revised sign ala- analysis form um has been provided indicating that no more than hundred and fifty square foot of total surface area and all non-illuminated signage will be provided on the zoning lot and not per use. I just want to be very clear. So the applicant is proposing a total of hundred and fifty square foot on the entire zoning lot. Um, applicant also, the property owner also provided a video of uh the vehicular delivery that is being made uh in this area, and it seems to be it captured uh uh basically an activity of uh uh associated with the abutting um auto repair shop and uh and also provided photos of the sidewalk conditions from March thirteenth. So I think from all of the submission that has been made and the community board's recommendation, I am going to strongly ask the applicant continue to monitor its site using site surveillance uh video cam uh to monitor. It is really a way for the applicant to A ensure that their property is operating as the board and the community board had asked. And to also, as it's an evidence for the to be presented to the community board or anybody who is um who is not able to differentiate between the different uh auto-related uses that are happening side by side. So I am satisfied with the submission, and I do genuinely feel that the applicant is trying its best to be a good neighbor. Uh, but uh, but it needs cooperation from the abutting occupants and from the commute and for that, the community board needs to work with the other users on the block. Um, those are my thoughts. Uh, Vice Chair, um, Shabata.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm satisfied with this application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown.
I felt that the applicant um submission was responsive to the issues that were raised, and I don't have any additional comments.
Um, Commissioner Sheta, thank you.
I want to thank them for providing the interior photos for the tar racks. I agree they are very well organized, and I have no further comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, next case, please.
Item number twelve, continued hearing, one fifty oh three B Z and one twenty-seven fifteen B Z, one thirty-five thirty-five Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, at the last hearing, board had expressed concerns about financial analysis and the proposed modification. Um, I will let Commissioner Artley Brown discuss the revised financing, but I want to focus on the submission of the plans. Um, the applicant did listen to us and at and then uh at the last hearing, board had directed the applicant not to increase the total floor area from previous grant, which was seven point five F A R and the proposed uh height um beyond the initial um that that was a seventeen um uh story. I forget the exact height of the building, but the revised plan maintains the total F A R of seven point five um uh to develop a mixed-use project. Only shift is that there is a little bit increase in the residential floor area with the reduction in the community facility, uh actually reduction in the commercial floor area. And lot of the additional floor area that has been uh realized, it is as a result of the carbon neutrality text amendment yeah that allows for floor area deduction for ultra-low energy building and some permitted deductions that are applicable for multifamily building pursuant to zoning resolution section twenty-three dash twenty-three, which are formally many of the elements of the quality housing development. So with that, the building height remains the same, F A R remains seven point five. The proposed number of dwelling unit increases from two sixty-nine to two seventy-five. And um, and the required amount of parking for the proposed development is two hundred and one. Uh, but is proposing two hundred and thirty-eight on on-site parking spaces, so a parking waiver is not reda- needed. So that's a reduction in the number of waivers that is being asked. So I think this is all going in uh from a revised plan point of view, I it's all going in the very uh in a right direction. I do want to make sure that the waiver sections are current to the zoning resolution section. For example, zoning zoning resolution section twenty-three four seven one has been replaced by twenty-three dash three four three. Now, regarding the floor area deduction pursuant to zoning resolution section twenty-three dash twenty-three specifically, zoning resolution section twenty-three dash two thirty-two A and B, more deductions can be achieved. So from the third floor uh corridor, a direct access to an outdoor garden is being provided. It allows for a fifty percent deduction, twenty-three dash two three two A one. Now include the floor area deductions pursuant to zoning resolution twenty-three dash two three one for amenities provided on the fourth floor, fifth floor, and there are storage rooms on every residential floors. Also, from the fifth floor uh from fifth floor onwards, portion of the corridor on the east side where the residential tower sets back from the side lot line has windows that are not on lot line. And this uh also is can be counted towards uh floor area deduction for corridors with direct daylight, which is twenty-three dash two three two A two. So when you applies these deductions, it further reduces the building floor area from F A R of seven point five. So I want the applicant to go through that exercise and reduce the F A R from seven point five without affecting the proposed number of residential units that's being proposed, proposed building height, any of those things. This is just tightening the F A R envelope to what actually can be built. I do not want any these extra floor areas floating around. This you got this perfect opportunity to get as much deduction and reduce the F A R. So I want the applicant to go through that exercise thoroughly and make those deductions. Uh, but I um I am, I I cannot say much on it because I want to hear from what Commissioner Artley Brown has to say on the financial from just looking at it. To me, it looked okay, but uh I want to hear from Commissioner Artley Brown. Vice Chair, Shabata.
Thank you, Chair. I had no further comments on this application.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown.
So I just want to say, um, looking at the financials, the applicant did make the corrections that we agreed needed to be made. Um, and we did come to an agreement that because their carrying costs during the sell-out were in previous um analyses that were submitted to the board for this project dating back to almost its inception, that we would accept those assumptions as they were originally presented to us. That being said, when you do read through the financials, the previously approved annualized return is six point two four percent and the newly proposed annualized return is six point five percent. And this is um an annualized return over a sixty-three month construction and sell-off slash rent-up period for both scenarios. So my comments here are that those two returns are very narrowly divergent. There's only a quarter of a percent difference in annual return. And so therefore, the question is, it doesn't, it's not significant as they're presenting it now. So therefore, the question is, why does a six point two four percent annual return not work anymore, yet a six point five seven percent annualized return does work? Usually when we see variances and even amendments, either the as of right or the previously approved, when you look at the financials, they could show us that the actual as of right or previously uh approved are not feasible. But this is a case where it appears as if the previously approved is feasible because there isn't very much difference between that and what's proposed. However, for the newly proposed, we would be granting a unit count waiver and a height waiver that wasn't previously um included in the application. So therefore, in order for us to be um in agreement that an application needs to have those additional waivers, they have to show us um that the what was previously approved by the board just isn't going to work. And from what I could see at this point in time, a quarter of a percent per year in a situation where many of their assumptions might not be borne out to actually be accurate. It could be that the construction period and sell-out is shorter than they're assuming, and if it is, then guess what? For the as approved, the return is going to go up much higher than that quarter of a percent differential that they're showing right now. And so because of that, I need I need them to address this issue better. Otherwise, I'm not yet in support of granting the additional waivers. I do think, though, that the the new building eliminating that whole big bulbous parking structure is a good idea, and they're moving in the right direction. And I am definitely on board with the idea that Chair, the Chair has put forward that they try and shrink the overall floor area of the building so they don't even ask for what was previously approved. I might be able to support the project, given that where they would basically be saying, okay, we're no longer asking for a seven point five overall F A R. But kind of in exchange for a better building design, it's going to require us to have an extra story. I could get behind that if they're going to present it to us that way. I just don't want there to be a net approval of more waivers or greater degree of waivers than what was previously approved. So that could be a way to gain my support.
Okay, and even let's say hypothetically, even if that results in that quarter of a marginal difference in the in the return.
I would be able to get behind it if they could say that, you know what, we looked at everything and turns out we could do a lot of this expansion as of right, so we actually don't need that extra grant of floor area or even the original seven point five. Now maybe we only have a seven point two five, so it's actually a quarter of a of a one F A R left.
Okay.
But could we actually have the extra floor so we could better arrange our floor area?
Okay.
They might be able to convince me that that's almost a watch.
Okay.
Because I I do, I am really overall sympathetic to the applicant here. And I do want to see this property develop and not forever languish going forward. But I still want the the financial analysis to pass the giggle test, so so to speak.
I I I, you know, I I think so far all the various versions of proposal that we have seen, this is by far been the most sensitive and uh uh good design in every which way and uh but yeah, I I like your suggestion. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further from me.
Okay. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I also have nothing further to add.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next to new cases.
New cases, item number thirteen, five forty-eight sixty-nine B Z, volume five, one oh seven ten Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, um, this is a uh extension of time, so proof of service of initial filing and hearing is not required. Um, applicant is seeking a Um, applicant is seeking an eighteen-month extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy for a previously approved variance for an automotive repair service which expired on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four to enlarge the existing structure um, uh, to a convenience store. The applicant states uh, that the storage shed was, was to be removed and to and to construct, to construct a convenience store enlargement. Um, I think all of that was done. So I was a little confused with that statement. Now, in its reason for delay, the applicant states, and I quote, uh, unknown issues, communication between Borough President, I'm sorry, no Borough President, BP, uh, and engineering firms in charge to obtain a certificate of occupancy, um, the project has not been completed. Now, this is the third time I'm seeing this, and today you're going to hear this many more times. This is becoming a very generic cut and paste statement for reason for delay. Applicant needs to provide a much more clear uh, reason that is very site-specific. So I want to know what is the outstanding task? And what are the steps that is needed to obtain this certificate of occupancy? In twenty sixteen, board had amended the prior variance to allow the enlargement of the convenience store. And uh, this has been going on for nearly ten years. And I think that convenience store was enlarged. So I'm very confused with the very generic statement that has been made. So applicant needs to provide clarity specific to this project, specific to this site. Based on photo number two compliance photos, uh, the fence along Hundred and Seventh Street is in need of work, so please look into that. And uh, and the striping, the, the, the striping of the parking area and vehicular maneuverability layout configurations, those have been wiped out. So please do re-stripe. Uh, but otherwise I have no additional comments. Uh, I need more clarity to understand what's going on with the site. Uh, Vice Chair Shabata?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I appreciate your comments with regard to clarity and further expansion of their reason that they need the extension and have no further comments.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. The only comment I have is, when I looked at the previously approved plans they submitted, they don't have our stamp. And I was like digging for the ones with the stamp to make sure that they did include like aluminum spread or something like that, but I couldn't find them. And I noticed that the site is immediately adjacent to residential. When I looked at the photos they submitted, it sounds like there are some light pools too. So I'm, I'm wondering if the previously submitted aluminum spread, if not, do we need one? We want to make sure that no like blood is shedding from that.
I'm sorry, interrupt. There's the previously approved plans that are in the file. And then what I did was I uh, resubmitted a set of approved plans without the stamp because it was blocking some information. The seal, the previous seal was blocking some information on the plans. That's one of the ones I did, right?
Yeah.
But you didn't see a, a lumen spread?
They, they are, the total is six pages. I didn't, I didn't see like aluminum spread there.
I, I thought I saw the.
I thought there was a lumen spread.
Yeah. Let me see. I thought there was one. Look for uh, the plan set without the B S A stamp.
This is five forty-eight dash sixty-nine, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me share the plans I looked at.
Oh, no, you're right. It's not there. No. I don't know.
Hmm. They were the plans and I just took out the.
Hmm.
Yeah, these are the ones that I looked at. Total six pages.
This is the approved plans, previously approved.
Yes, and they don't have the stamp, like I said. Yeah. This is each one, each two, three, four, five and six.
Yeah, I think there is another set of plan. If you look for it, it says revised plan with, uh, approved plan without seal.
These are the ones without the seal, I believe, right?
Yeah, but I, you're right. I didn't, uh, I do not see a lumen plan, but what I am seeing is the, the previously approved set of plans had on page one, um, every light post, there's a note added saying sing, existing single fixture area light with shield reduced to twelve foot height. So these these light posts were to be twelve foot high. I do not know if they are. And one, two, there are two such light poles. And, and then there is a note that is there that says all lighting source that are located adjacent to residential shall be. I think the site condition is also different. The sites.
I just hear that, that picture from the, their submission. And this is, this is one of the light pools I'm talking about. I don't think this is twelve feet. There is, there is one here too.
Yeah.
I believe it's, it's way more than twelve.
Yeah, I, what I seem to recall from the prior, it because the, there is a grade level change from where this site is located to the residential use. The idea was by having the light pole uh, be at a reduced height of twelve feet would, will not cause any um, spread of lumen onto the residential and will not uh, be an issue for those units on the second floor. That's what I seem to recall. So the applicant does need to provide a clarity if the height of the the poles um, have been reduced to twelve feet or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Otley, I'm sorry, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Item number fourteen, two fifteen B Z, line five, two oh two oh six Hillside Abbey, Queens.
Okay, um, this is also an application for an extension of time. So proof of service of initial filing and hearing is not required. Um, the applicant is seeking this extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy for a previously approved variance pertaining to an automotive service station located at the subject site. Um, the, it, which expired on November twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. And also the applicant is seeking a board's, a waiver of board's rule. Again, um, the reason for delay is the same explanation that has been provided. Unknown issues, communication between BP and engineering firm in charge of obtaining uh, certificate of occupancy, the project has not been completed. Um, again, my comment is being repetitive. This is becoming a generic cut and paste statement. And the applicant needs to provide more clarity, that is site-specific. What, what, what is the outstanding task? Applicant needs to provide a very step-by-step um, timeline of uh, to obtain the CO. With regards to the compliance, applicant needs to provide a compliance chart of prior board conditions. Site seems to be in good condition. Sinage analysis provided for both street frontages. And they do comply with C one. Uh, applicant, applicant needs to clarify if the remediation equipment shed has been removed and the fence uh, enclosing it. The statement of fact is devoid of any explanation. I though see it has been, um, you know, um, you know, especially with the, regarding the remediation. But from the photos, I do see it has been removed. So but the statement of fact needs to clarify that. And where the remediation equipment was there, um, it was going to be planted with grass. And so far, nothing has happened. We are approaching planting season. So please uh, do provide all the necessary planting as per the approved plan. Um, uh, there are no open violations. So those are my comments. Vice Chair Shabata?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I do agree with your comment, uh, as stated, as stated on the last matter, that there needs to be a much more clear explanation as to why this extension is needed. Um, I'd also agree, the site does seem clean by both the Google Photos and the submitted photos. I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no additional comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I have the same comment from a previous hearing. Same exact applies here. The only, the only distinction is that when you look at the photos for this site, it seems that there are no light pools close to the residential, but I believe they still need to submit a lumen or if they submit it before, they need to include it in the said they, they provided to us. Thank you.
This is an extension of time. We typically do not ask for these additional information. Um, if, if this was an extension of term, we would. But in this case, the applicant needs to provide the assurance. Um, and I recall in this case, there was a light pole which was, uh, there, there was no light pole along the only residential building that was abutting. Uh, that rear lot line where the, I think, um, where the that the remediation equipment was placed. And the only light source there was a light pole, a light fixture that was mounted on the rest, on the, on the
Bentley.
The building structure.
Yes, yes.
And I think because of that, we didn't think a light pole, a, a lumen analysis was required. Um,
I'm, I'm, to, to just to save your time, I, I'm not asking them to submit a lumen spread. I'm saying if, if it was included in the previous previously approved plans, include it here. If not, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Yun?
I have nothing further.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, two thirty-five fifteen A, volume two, and two fifty-nine fifteen, volume A, volume two, eight Cornell Lane, Queens.
Okay, this is also an extension of time. Uh, applicant is, and so proof of service of initial filing and hearing is not required. Um, applicant is seeking a one-year extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy and waiver of board's rule for a previously approved GCL thirty-six waiver to legalize an enlargement of an existing residential building and its garage located at the subject site, which expired on December twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Um, zoning chart has a typo regarding the existing residential floor area. It is zero point three five. I think it was thirty-five point oh. So just the decimal moved somewhere. Um, the reason for delay was, as stated, was due to pandemic uh, effect, uh, which affected the filing process and timeline at DOB. And also there was a change in ownership. Um, these resulted in the delay. Uh, with regards to the status, uh, new owner has taken the step to comply with the board's regulation. A TCO was issued on eleven twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. And uh, so the applicant is seeking one years. I just want to make sure one year should, is, is adequate. Is there, if there is any construction work outstanding that is needed, will one year be sufficient to complete that and to obtain a CO? Um, compliance chart does not ref, refer to the resolution conditions. Uh, so please review the resolution. For example, restrictive deck was required to be recorded prior to obtaining a CO. Uh, we did receive a recorded restrictive deck, so these are just like simple, um, cleaning up. Um, I, applicant state that there is no open violations. Uh, applicant needs to provide a DOB printout to back up its statement. But other than that, I really don't have any wish, issue with this application.
On the TCO, they didn't, I know because it's not final, I'm assuming that's, they weren't required to note the restrictive deck. But on the final, they should, correct?
Yes, yes. I think it is part of a condition. If not, we can make it part of this condition.
Okay. Because that's why I asked them for the restricted deck to make sure it was recorded, because it didn't show up in the CO.
Right. Yes. Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Shabata?
Thank you, Chair. In this case, I was satisfied with the request for extension, uh, specifically them stating that the COVID nineteen pandemic and the passing of the previous owner uh, and the organization of that estate. We all know that could take uh, quite a bit of time. So I was satisfied with that explanation. Um, I do also uh, agree that it would be wise for them to ask for longer than a year extension to obtain the final CO, so that they don't have to necessarily come here. We certainly have the authority to give a two-year extension on this.
Yeah.
I have nothing further.
Go ahead.
The board want to consider extending this without a specific time to get a certificate of occupancy, since this is a GCL thirty-six. Uh, the board in its practice recently has not been requiring certificates. The board's been requiring COs to be obtained with conditions and, and the calendar number reflected, but not in a time cert.
We don't have to. I think we're only requiring for GCL thirty-five, not for GCL thirty-six.
That's correct.
So if, if the board is enabled to it, we don't have to require.
We certainly have the authority to, to have, have an extension of time period, but we don't, we're not required to.
And given, given that the four-year requirement is born out of zoning and this is a GCL statute, it's, it's really in the board's discretion here.
I think we should be consistent with our policy and therefore not require a, a time set, a limit to obtain a T, uh, obtain a CO. Or GCL thirty-six.
There certainly isn't anything in the, in the facts before us that would, would indicate a reason to set a timeline.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Nothing further from me then.
Thank you. Okay, um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
I'm satisfied with the application. Thank you.
Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I agree with what has been stated. The only question I have is if there's no timeline on the FCO, then should we have them revise the TCO as Tony mentioned, the restrictive debt does not appear on it.
Um, this is a question for council. I like the idea because that at least the restrictive deck is tied to something. So it can be tied to the TCO and to the final CO. We can make that change.
The board's condition, I believe, would be that all conditions be reflected in the certificate of occupancy. So if the restrictive deck is a condition, it should be reflected. If not, it'll be a condition of this approval.
I guess, I'm not sure, like, on this. I, the concern was that we did ask as part of the final grant that it, the restrictive deck be tied to CO. But because it's a TCO and we know TCO can drag on for a long time, should we not then tie the restrictive deck to the TCO and onwards?
Yes.
Okay, that's what you were saying. Just my It's been a long Sunday for me. Okay. Yes.
Um, item number sixteen, twenty twenty eighty-four B Z, one sixty-one Emerson Place, Brooklyn.
Um, this is also uh, an extension of time. Uh, so a proof of service of initial filing and hearing is not required. Applicant is requesting a four-year extension of time to complete construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy for a previously approved variance and special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-three dash six twenty-three um, to develop an income restrictives, income restricted supportive housing on the subject site, which will expire on January twenty-three, twenty twenty-six. Um, applicant states the reason for delay is the funding. Um, the funding has been delayed um, at the funding agencies. And therefore, it will not be possible to complete the uh, construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy by um, uh, January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, so applicant proactively is trying to extend the extension of time. I would say it would be from twenty twenty-six, not from today. Because they are, the, the certificate of occupancy stated, it said that certificate of occupancy shall be obtained by twenty twenty-six. So whatever we grant, it should be from twenty twenty-six, another four years.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so with regards to the status, um, applicant has filed a new, uh, new building permit application, which was back in twenty twenty, received approval back in twenty twenty-four. Um, and has completed relocation of former tenants of the existing building to other uh, facilities of its uh, uh, organization. Um, my question was if a demolition permit has been obtained for the existing building and, uh, the applicant's four years extension of time, it is the maximum the board can grant pursuant to the variance. Um, uh, section seventy-two hundred. So, um, there is one DOB violation and which is regarding boiler inspection for the existing building. The building is going to be demolished, so I think um, really doesn't have much of a weight. Um, uh, I'm satisfied with this application. I just want that clarification if the demolition permit has been obtained. Um, Vice Chair Shibeta?
Thank you, Chair. I'm also satisfied with this application. I do want to, uh, state that prior to the demolition, when, you know, the, the site still needs to be in good shape, uh, and held, maintained tightly. And the view three from submitted photos, uh, shows that there needs to be some cleanup with addressing the trash bin, uh, on the premises.
Okay.
Is that view three, Commissioner? View three, okay, cleanup. Thank you, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Oakley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Same here.
Okay. Commissioner Yun? Nothing further from me.
Appeals calendar, continued hearing items. I'm sorry, may I go on?
Just give me one second. Okay. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Appeals calendar, continued hearing items, side number seventeen, twenty twenty-three forty-one A through twenty twenty-three forty-six A, Long Street Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay. So we received a, a letter, a detailed letter from the applicant clarifying the information thus far that has been, uh, requested by various agencies and applicants' response to these, uh, requests, uh, and the agencies being DOT, DEP, and Fire Department. So I'll just go by each agency. So with regards to the DOT, uh, response, applicant states that regarding ownership status of Long Street, a response was provided regarding street status and the draft builder's pavement plan also has been submitted, which will be reviewed and approved by DOT after GCL is granted, which has been the typical process, even in a normal, uh, as-of-right development, and that's also what the board has seen in GCL thirty-five cases. Applicant has stated that it will, uh, agree to a condition of the grant that, that, uh, the builder's pavement plan be approved prior to the issuance of a TCO for the subject site. So, um, and then regarding the minimum distance between curb cut and street intersection, applicant requests the applicable code, applicant requested the applicable code from DOT. Um, applicant has stated at earlier hearing that the, this, that there is, uh, no code regarding that. And, uh, it does, and if it is, it does not apply to this particular site. Um, it, I think there is a requirement of a fifty-foot setback, but that is for commercial thoroughfares or something like that. Um, so I don't know if this site qualifies. I, I don't think it does, but that's, um, so DOT may not be applying it correctly. Um, though this will be, um, um, I think a lot of the statement that DOT has asked, I would agree that it would be determined um, uh, during the GCL, uh, uh, process at, uh, especially with the review of the builder's pavement plan by DOT and the site plan by Buildings Department. Um, the, uh, and if, let's say, as part of the, uh, the revision that DOT makes with regards to the builder's pavement plan or the, uh, DOB requires a revision to the site plan, then it has to be amended by BSA. So the applicant will have to come back and seek an amendment of the approved, uh, previously, of, of an approved plan. Now, since the board's question to DOT is only regarding capital improvement, uh, plan affecting the study area, in lieu of, uh, DOT providing the response, applicant can provide it, uh, based on city online portal of capital improvement projects at the public hearing. And I think before, I, I wrote this out last night and, uh, I was pleasantly surprised to see this morning uh, an email that came from the applicant with a set of maps that, uh, that is showing, uh, using the New York City Department of City Planning, City Planning, uh, Capital Planning Explorer, uh, all the various capital improvement plans that are proposed, uh, in the, in this area, but not affecting the subject site. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at the, um, text. I was, um, I think this was a concern that we have been hearing from the community, from the elected officials, but that there aren't any capital improvement plans uh, budgeted, allocated underway in the immediate subject site, and that is a critical component. And I, I for one, I'm going to make it very clear to those, uh, practitioners who are listening with regards to GCL thirty-five. I will strongly suggest that when you're submitting GCL thirty-five application, please also submit similar document from the New York City Plannings Capital Planning Explorer of the various capital improvement plans um, uh, in, uh, within the study areas. This can expedite the review process. Uh, because that is all we are asking for from DOT and DEP is capital improvement plans. Um, so, um, with regards to response to DOP, DEP comments, applicant states that, uh, DEP has asked about the easement, which, uh, as we all know, Department of Finance often, uh, tax maps, labels, map, street widening as an easement on the city map street. Uh, and that is the case in this case. Uh, as stated by the applicant, DEP, uh, review of GCL thirty-five application is to ensure that uh, development within a mapped but unbilled street does not interfere with the drainage plan for the area. Since Long Street is not built and it has no improvements. The drainage plan, uh, shows a tentative extension of existing water mains and sewer under the separate application, under a separate application that is pending at DEP. So there are different divisions of DEP that are reviewing different components that is related to this project, and that is typical of any as-of-right development in the city of New York. So what this is going through is similar process. Um, the applicant has submitted requested information to DOP, uh, sorry, DEP to address DEP comments, and applicant is requesting that as a condition of the board's grant, a drainage plan be amended prior to issuing a TCO. Also, a pretty standard procedure that board has exercised in the past. With regards to the Fire Department response, uh, uh, required information as requested by Fire Department was provided. Fire Department had asked for, um, Long Street between Hattie and Shaffee be opened and improved. And, um, and the, and that the Long Street, uh, width of Long Street be widened. Applicant has modified the plan to widen the streetbed of Long Street and also improve the intersection of Hattie and Long Street, which is city-owned. It's a, it's kind of the T-leg of that, um, uh, portion. Uh, the width of the Long Street would be thirty foot wide. This is to address a Fire Department's comments to allow of emergency vehicles to access the roadway. Now, regarding extending Long Street, uh, from Hattie to Shaffee, that is not in city, uh, applicant's ownership. Uh, that is not under the ownership of, uh, the applicant. It is, uh, city-owned. Applicant has expressed, uh, that, uh, that it would not object to city widening that portion of Long Street, but it is not applicant's responsibility, uh, to expand and I, um, that portion. Since none of the curb cuts to the proposed, uh, buildings would be fronting along that section of, uh, Long Street. It is all between Glenon and Hattie. Um, applicant also states, per Fire Department's, uh, response, that all the buildings, uh, will be, uh, sprinkled and the fire hydrants have been identified on the site plan. And, uh, and applicant further clarified that it is not seeking of any Fire Department, uh, a modification of any fire code or building code. Um, also, we received four, uh, additional, uh, letters of oppositions from neighbors and community board. Concerns have been raised, uh, uh, similar concerns, but I, I, I just want to read it out for the record. Everybody knows that the board hears it, reads it, reviews it, and considers all these comments. And so I want to read out all my comments based on.
All member of them.
Okay. Uh, concerns, uh, raised are that the proposed development with overtaxed sewer, the existing wetland by the water, uh, uh, water prevents flooding in, uh, nearby basement, and the property was zoned for two, two-family homes. The subject portion of the land is located over hundred feet from Hammond Cove. Uh, this, uh, there, this hundred foot is a buffer that is city-owned and that is under parks jurisdiction. There's no development that is happening on that hundred-foot buffer. What is happening is beyond the hundred foot that is fronting on Long Street. The development parcel is located beyond this parkland and that, and, uh, and is away from Hammond Cove. Uh, so the natural wetland that is located in the parkland will continue to be retained and maintained. Um, I also looked at the New York State DEC website that identifies wetland, because the term wetland has been used so much. I, for, for my own, uh, understanding, I went to the New York State DEC website to identify the wetland, uh, located, uh, in this area. Now, per New York State DEC website, parts of the western portion of Hammond Cove has been identified as wetland, not the portion where the devil, uh, where the parkland is located, abutting the development site. So the western portion of Hammond Cove, but not the eastern portion of Hammond Cove, Hammond Cove has been designated as a wetland. So I want to be very clear for, clear, when we use these terminologies, we understand exactly how it is exercised in legal term and, uh, and, and, uh, legislative term, uh, a, uh, when we are looking at these documents. Applicants should be providing, I, I, I also, this is one place where I would have very much appreciated if the applicant could have provided a map to the board and in writing to address that such concerns raised by the communities and providing a New York State DEC, uh, map, and this would have just gone a long way, kind of showing the how responsive the applicant is being to all the comments that are being raised and to help, uh, un, help the board understand the situation. Uh, the site is in a flood zone and the proposed development has to meet all the applicable flood regulations. Board is not waiving any of these requirement and Department of Buildings will be reviewing the plans for complacency with all the flood regulations. The proposed development of the site is subject to the review of DEP. Um, like it would review for any dev, as-of-right development that would be built abutting a city street. And it would be subject to DEP review with regards to all the sewer easements, water, uh, water, uh, construction and with the reconstruction of the Long Street roadbed, all new, um, which does not have any underground sewer water line. All of those would have to be built at the expense of the property owner. The two zoning lots, uh, that are located of, the, the subject law, zoning lots are lot fifty-four and fifty-seven. These two lots are going to be combined and when, it's going to be apportioned into six zoning lots, uh, uh, and that's, thus, six buildings. Now, the apportionment of the lot is based on the requirements of the zoning resolution and that, and as part of that, it has to meet the minimum lot area requirement, it has to meet the minimum lot width. BSA is not waiving anything and BSA is not approving the apportionment. The apportionment is reviewed by DOB and approved by Department of Finance. Uh, the proposed number of zoning lots and the number of dwelling units that are being proposed has to comply with the underlying zoning regulations, floor area, zone, per zoning lot and the units per zoning lot. So based on the zoning analysis chart that has been provided by the applicant, and I went over it again, uh, which is included in the original application that was submitted to the community board as well. All the proposed sites comply with the minimum lot size and lot width dimensions, proposed floor area and the number of dwelling units and the required number of parking for each zoning lot. We are not waving, I want to be a house in person clear, we are not waving any of the zoning underlying regulatory controls, nor are we waving any building codes, nor are we waving any fire codes, and everything has to be approved by, uh, the, the street reconstruction has to be approved by DOT. All the sewer easements, all the sewer runoff, water runoff connections, all of those have to be approved by DEP. All we are allowing is for the, the portion of the development to be located within the bed of Map Street, provided there is no capital improvement plan. And, uh, as I see it, the minimum lot area per ZHO rela, allows for two thousand three hundred and seventy-five square foot minimum lot width with the twenty-five foot lot, uh, uh, lot area with a minimum lot width of twenty-five feet for one and two-family detached homes in an R-three A zoning district. Applicant is proposing much bigger lot sizes and lot widths. So the overall density proposed on the subject site is less than permitted under ZHO. Also received, uh, letters from, as I mentioned, from the district manager and the chair of community board stating the reasons for objecting the application. The application is not before the board under seventy-two, twenty-one variance. It is seeking a waiver only to build a mapped but, uh, build on a mapped but unbilled street that is privately owned. As stated at earlier hearings, city has not taken ownership of the subject site, as proven by the document that has been provided by the applicant today. Also, uh, and, and, and for over ten years, it has remained, uh, on, um, uh, it has remained on, in private ownership and city has not taken any action to, uh, acquire these land and no capital improvement plan is in place as documented by the information provided uh, to fund, uh, the acquisition of these privately owned land to build, uh, Long Street to its mapped width. An intent to consider implementing a capital improvement plan by DOT or any other city agency for future is not a ground for the board to deny it. Board's findings pers, is pursuant to GCL thirty-five is limited in these factors, as I have stated in earlier hearings. Fire Department is reviewing the plan to ensure that the proposed roadbed is wide enough for emergency vehicular access and meets the applicable fire code, and this is for the portion of Long Street between Glenon and Hattie, because that is the only portion that is providing, uh, a, access to these buildings. As the applicant has stated, board in the past has approved GCL thirty-five with conditions for builder's pavement plan and amended drainage plan be approved by applicable agencies, in this case DOT and DEP respect, um, um, I'm forgetting the term, in tandem with, uh, DOB, uh, review of the site plan, uh, once, uh, after the, after BSA grants this approval, with conditions that prior to issuance of a T O, TCO approvals are received. So I really do not see any deviation in terms of what the applicant has submitted, what, what we are reviewing and what we have consistently implemented and guided and required of these applications. Um, so I again want to thank everybody's participation and, uh, and their concerns, but I, I keep repeating it because what we are reviewing is very limited in scope and what we are asking for has been responded to by this submission. Um, uh, Vice Chair Shibeta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. That was already thorough. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Oakley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
I have no further.
I have one.
Okay. Um, Commissioner, um, Yun?
Thank you. Nothing further from me.
Okay, thank you.
Item number eighteen, twenty twenty-four fourteen A twenty-three, Zerelli Court, Staten Island will be adjourned.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, twenty twenty-four seventeen A thirty-five, Marjory Street, Staten Island.
Okay. So Fire Department in its latest correspondence with, uh, project manager has asked that the existing concrete barrier be replaced with a retaining wall to, uh, retain the existing earth so that the frontage of the lot can be fully open with a paved street width of almost forty-seven feet. This is a GCL thirty-six. And the, and the, uh, project manager got further confirmation from Fire Department as to which retaining wall it was referring to. It seems the retaining wall Fire Department was referring to is not located within the property. It is located within the right-of-way of, uh, Marjory Street. So, as we know, the applicant, to the extent this grant permits, is only responsible to build the retaining wall that is located within their property. And, uh, um, and therefore, uh, the retaining wall that, uh, that the Fire Department is asking uh, is located outside and the board cannot require the applicant to improve that retaining wall. It would be, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would be contract, contrary to GCL. It would be, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would be contrac- contrary to GCL thirty-six. Uh, board, however, can condition that the retaining wall that is located within the property be reviewed by DOB and work permit be issued accordingly. Now, regarding uh Marjory Street being open to public, which is Fire Department's concern, applicant in its latest submission has provided additional information regarding the legal uh uh status of Marjory Street. So according to the final Staten Island Borough President's street map, it is a public right-of-way, and it seems uh it uh and the there are certificate of occupancy uh that has been granted to buildings that are located along Marjory Street uh and and I believe the city does provide services uh on this uh street. So I just want to make sure that this information has been relayed to Fire Department uh and and that it addresses their concern. Um, and I think we can ensure that the applicant can further give us an assurance that uh they will en- ensure that uh Marjory Street will remain open um and uh will be accessible for Fire Department. They can make put put that in a s- a letter that would be helpful. Okay, Vice Chair Shabeta.
Nothing further from me, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Otley Brown.
I have no additional questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Same here. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Yun.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, this concludes the review session for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. We'll resume for the public hearing at.
It's we are at eleven fifty mark. Do you want to resume at twelve? Twelve oh five, okay, twelve oh five.
Okay, we'll resume, ladies and gentlemen, at twelve oh five. Public hearing. Do you want to change the screen, Jella? Good more good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals. I can't get the screen. Same break still. The screen is the same frame. Here we go. Okay. Okay. Good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals, public hearing for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Please note for the record, Commissioner Sheta is joining us remotely. Special order calendar, continued hearing items, item number eight, three forty-eight fifty-one B C eighty-eight twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Yeah. I did let him in. Generally, if not him, someone from his office joins in. Ah, Mr. Kanzada, good to see you. Hope you're feeling well.
Thank you. I was very sick. This this flu was something looks like COVID, but wasn't COVID.
Yeah, I I there's something going around. Well, good to see you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let me swear you in, both of you. Um, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board members' questions?
Yes.
Please state the name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Um, Naseem, Naseem Deekh and Dada, I'm the applicant.
And my name is Zaman Santo, and I'm the associate.
Okay, you heard the board's comments. Do you wish to respond?
Right, so I have the comments from the board. So. So first one was they provide duty announcement to the frontage of the gas station landscaping that was from the community board. So we agree with the community board, this particular site does not have a room for any trees or planting because it's a corner lot and all the corners are used. So there is not much we can provide here, except we have two trees on the right and left rear. Those are planted, but there's nothing else remaining to be planted. So next question. So next question we had from the community board that also stipulated stipulated and confirmed with D E P for swale remediation. So D E P does not get involved in in the tank installation and removal. T E C Department in Environment Conservation gets involved as New York State Department and they will take care of that part. And the one of the question they had charging station for the e-bike, they will be happy to see it. But it's not possible because none of the charging for the bikes are compatible. So charging for the bike, we love to do it, but I don't think so it's possible at this time because each bike has a different type of charger. So lightning will be kept to next question they had like no kept to minimal impact on nearby residential area. Yes, we will maintain lighting and we will have on the property line residential side zero except the sidewalk will have some lighting because of the street lighting. The next question they had, there are no current plans for the interior purification of the gas station. We don't do anything for the interior for the beautification because this is the repair shop and then this is a C store. And the next question they had, all such material will be securely stored stored inside the building to ensure safety. So we have that there will be new shelving and new storage and there will be new walk-in boxes inside. And then next question, the uncorruptible area shall not be sold in new containers stored in any form or fashion. So we are not doing a very soul at this location. Owner agree to this already.
Okay, yes, please.
Now.
Thank you.
And then we have the B S A comments, so I just want to go over. I have five comments, so let me just go over quickly then we discuss. The proposed repair base included in the statement of fact finding within the building size complied with Z R eleven four one two nineteen sixty one, which is the fifty percent rule. So this is in compliance and we will correct the statement to reflect fifty percent in compliance. The next question from board we had, the mechanical work shall be performed using the hand tools only. This is always that way. And now the tools are hand tools. There's no machinery or anything in the repair shop. Modern machineries are all cornless tools, so they are all hand tools only. And there's no noise issued to this and there will be no car repair outside anything because owner agree to it and we have a bigger shop and more deeper inside, so there's no work outside. And community is happy right now because they provide good service to the community. They have a very good recommendation from the community. Next thing is the messary trash enclosure was previously agreed and then Commissioner Yun agree with us to be keeping outside, but we are looking to change the direction facing street front, so we have easy access for the for the removal and you know, putting back the containers inside the trash enclosure. The next question we had, the auto repair will be conducted indoor, no outdoor.
So, Mr. Cause, I think the comment I had raised that since the building is being enlarged and it is going to be built to the lot line. My recommendation was that instead of having a standalone trash enclosure, the trash enclosure be locate contained within the building that you're enlarging and the enclosure can opening can face eighty ninth Avenue.
I can do that. If the board wants, we can have this trash enclosure attached to the building and made of mess and the permanent type of structure and with the door and everything. I can do that, but problem is that when the container heads mess and this thing, this becomes a unrepairable. But these chain link fence and this covered enclosures are more better for this type of work because it's easily can be repaired and we can put together. So if what was I can do mess and I have no problem, but it won't be inside, it will be outside, but it will be missing.
The concern is that the there's a gap between the trash enclosure and the landscaping along the lot line and that gap. My concern is that that may be become a space for collection of store. It will become a storage area, an extended storage area, or it would be misuse as a dumping place. So it has to be somehow the other contained in a way where it's not going to become a problem for the.
If we are changing the orientation facing it outside, then it should be should be done in there. Then there's not that that area in between. Because the most orientation change facing the doors towards the eighty nine street, then it will be covered. Then there will be no dead area behind.
And and the structure will be attached to the new building?
Yeah, and let's do miss and I have no problem with the miss and we will provide the center. We'll we'll miss in the gates. So next question we have, the repair work will be conducted indoor, no outdoor work will take place for parking in front of the shop will ensure that there's no work going outside because there's parking in front of the two parking which are in front of the C store and the repair shop. They are for customers in and out, they are picking milk or whatever, so they will be in and out. So there's two parking spot will be there. So there's no repair work outside. There's no room for repair outside house. And then the last question was that the air pump. We do have the location for the air pump. That's the only location we can accommodate. But in real world, I don't think this is the first time we are doing it, the electric charging station. I don't think anybody will be charging, but we are trying. Let's see how it goes. So this spot will be always empty. Charging station will not be huge because all the key food and all those supermarkets are providing the charging station. People love to go there at the gas station. Unless somebody has emergency or he doesn't have enough mileage, he might charge for a few minutes. But in real world, this charging station will not be occupied. So this air pump will be always available. Location is always empty for that air pump. The question board had that people might park on the sidewalk and do the air pump. I don't think so. Anybody will come to this air pump because our next door is a tire facility. They provide the service for free. Because people go and charge change tire next to it. So we have the air pump location just provided as a courtesy, but I don't think this air pump will be ever used.
I think more than the air pump, it's the vacuum. More people would use the vacuum and 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 people do stay longer period for vacuuming their car than for air pump. So the amount of time they will be blocking the sidewalk for vacuuming is going to be longer than an air pump. While today, the electric vehicles, a number of electric vehicles wanting to use this facility may be less, but these plans, once they are implemented. You know, things are changing in a very rapid fashion in the span of last five, six years. So we cannot make that assumption and therefore allow something like this. You have to figure out another way. Either you combine the area for the electric vehicle as also a place for the vacuuming and put it in place and it can serve both purposes. That could be one way of doing it. But I I agree with Commissioner Yun by placing it there, we will, you will be blocking the sidewalk and it will affect the vehicular flow, which will be contrary to what we would be approving. So I I will strongly.
Let me, yeah, let me combine them. Let's say somebody is vacuuming, the charging guy has to wait. So let's let me combine both, so there's no headache.
Okay.
Here we combine that, no problem.
Yeah, combine. Is that okay with the the board combining the? Thank you. Yeah.
So that's what I have. And any question board have, I'm getting to answer.
And I think the board at the initially had some concern as to, and I know why you have removed the vacuum pump where I think initially it was close to where the word yard is written and the concern was the vacuum would make noise and will affect the yard. So maybe you can move the electrical, one of the electrical vehicle little bit.
Back towards the towards the avenue.
And you can have the vacuum cleaner more towards the back so that at least the sound will be blocked by the one story building.
Yeah, okay.
It's the yard. So that may be another way of making sure you're attenuating the sound generated from the vacuum cleaner.
So I'll move I'll move both the vehicle a little bit towards the twenty fifth avenue, maybe five feet and then put this vacuum in between.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, the regarding the done age, the mechanical done age that is going to be located on the roof. It seems to be a little close to the residential building, so A, if it can be moved little bit away from the residential building, that would be good. Alternatively, alternatively, if that is the only place, then need to make sure that it is attenuated enough and not going and not going to impact the residential.
I can move it to the next. I can move it to the next bay. I have a problem with that. I can move to the next bay, which is too far from the right side. And in the back, there is a shed there, so I can move it to next bay on the left side. Which is basically the old building. Yeah, we move it, no problem.
But wouldn't that still create the noise issue? I'm not sure.
Commissioner, in the back, we have the we have the shed, frame shed, it's a big shed in the back. And nobody is nearby in the back. There's a frame shed, it touches my building. If you see my first seat, it mentioned that there.
Okay, I would suggest, even if you relocate, just provide proper a noise attenuation around around the the damage.
No problem. We'll do that. There's noise attenuation on the sides. Yeah, we have done this on other sites also.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gonzaga and his team? Yeah, we can go to the public. Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is three forty eight fifty one B Z eighty eight eighty eight twenty Astoria Boulevard Queens. Should you wish to comment on this case, you may dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the prompt, after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to comment. And while we are waiting for the public to call in. I was taking notes. I may have I may have missed what you said. We need some clarity about the type of fence that has been proposed because based on this plan drawing and the and notations and the fence detail and what's been stated, it's a little confusing as the kind of fence that has been proposed. So.
We have a six feet high channeling fence on the right side only existing. And in the back, we are proposing new channeling fence where we extend the building. That will be all new fence in the back. On the right side and left side a little bit.
Okay, so just in the plan, make it very clear where the existing channeling fence are and where the proposed ones are and what material they are.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah.
They will be logged with the green plastic or apex.
Okay.
I'll make it clear, interesting and new and wherever this thing is not in good shape, we'll fix it. Owner is very, you know, interested to move this forward as soon as we can. So and he's willing to do everything we are asking him. He said, yes, we'll comply.
I I think most of the board members were okay with with regarding the hours. Hours, I think we, what did we say regarding the hours of operation? Seven to eight was okay with everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
How much time do you need, Mr. Gonzaga, to submit?
One week is fine. I'm just putting the facts and finding and I'm looking the AC and the vaccines.
For you for April. April, yeah.
I'm okay with the next one.
Yeah, we, the submission date for hold on.
April seventh day is three.
Uh, yeah, I think, but the changes are not that significant.
Yes, only three, I can write it down.
What is the next submission, April? So if you can submit, oh yeah, the deadline was is passed, but if you can submit it by by Monday of next week.
Yeah, we can do that, no problem.
Week to make the changes.
Sure. So the trash enclosure and vacuum had to relocate on the.
Just make sure everything, like every, the entire package is complete and consistent.
Next Monday, by next Monday I submit and then it will be the hearing roughly.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And and we will close, I mean, based on the revise, actually, I won't ask. Do you want to close now? Do you want to look at the plans before you close?
If he's moving the trash enclosure, shouldn't we move, shouldn't we review it?
We should. Okay, then we we are not closing it. Yeah.
Okay, um, can you, sorry if you clarified this, the plywood fence that you show in the fence detail, where is that going?
That's temporary during construction. That is temporary during construction. Plywood fence is not going there. It's only for construction, but we are having a channeling fence with the Opex slots inside green color.
Okay, you can see how that's confusing?
Yeah, I'll take it out this one. And we can use the plywood. This slide. They should put the channeling fence. Where is the plywood fence? I don't see here.
On the left of the page above the zoning computations on your page.
It says detail.
Oh, that's gate and this one is, no, this is a six feet high channeling fence. These are shown the Opex slots inside. I will I will super important see channeling in it also, so it's clear.
Yeah.
Yes, sure, I can do that.
Yeah, it very clearly talks about four by eighth of an inch plywood fastened to a two foot by four foot at sixteen on center.
Yeah, actually, we copied from there to make it this one. I'm sorry. I will share you the channeling fence. Yeah, we copied it from there. But also put it post, our support for channeling on on it also that looks like both Opex with the channeling fence.
So just provide a detail and correct the information here.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay. Thank you. Number, thank you. Good to see you. Item number nine. Think that's it. Uh, yeah, we will, we will schedule this for April. Continued hearing submission, March thirty first. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number nine, three seventy four seventy one B Z two oh five eleven Northern Boulevard Queens. I am letting Mr. Dale in. Good afternoon, Mr. Dale. Is there anyone with you?
Good afternoon, just myself today.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do so affirm.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. I did listen to the comments at review session. The primary comment per my notes was regarding photos that were submitted. I'd like to thank Mr. Costanza for forwarding those to me. I did review them. I reached out to the owner and operator. And per the information they provided that after the lot was cleared and we did submit the photos from January thirtieth showing the lot was cleared. There was one instance where a carrier, because of all that's going on with the business and things being a little bit in flux now until construction is complete, that a one carrier did drop off vehicles by mistake in early February, but they moved them the next day. Myself personally, I did visit the site after the photos were submitted from January thirtieth. I did visit early in February and it was clear. And I went back in the middle of March because it's near our office and it was clear. So upon information and belief, it's being maintained clear. More important, going forward, we just want to assure the board that we're agreeable to conditions, maintaining the prior conditions should the board vote to approve this application, that the voluntary accessory parking area is just used for customer parking, staff parking, and then only when a customer purchases a vehicle. Because at that point, it is a customer card that will drop it off there. uh, because at that point it is a customer car that will drop it off there uh while it waits being picked up for customers. So that's the only time new vehicles will be uh permitted and allowed in the site. Uh, I believe that was the primary question that was raised. Uh, if there's anything I missed, I'm happy to respond.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I would also strongly recommend that you let your uh client know that uh while it is in flux with all the construction and the temporary nature of the situation, this kind of, but someone needs to be at the site to make sure these kind of uh accidental drop offs are not happening. And, and that uh as it is with construction, oftentimes the sidewalks are kind of impacted. To have additional vehicles parked on the sidewalk exacerbates that, so please do let your client know that and uh and make sure that they, during construction, also they meant they are observant and, and, and about these uh good neighborly conducts.
Understood and agreed, and I already have communicated that to them again today.
Yep, I, I'm sure you did, but. Um, so, okay, any questions or comments? Uh, let's go to the public.
So the case that we're currently discussing is three seventy-four seventy-one B Z two oh five eleven Northern Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to comment on this case, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss or comment. How much time do you need, mister?
Um, he doesn't have to respond to anything. I mean, he doesn't have to submit anything. I don't think so. What I would.
We say no time.
What I would suggest, in the interest of, uh, if you can provide an affidavit from your owner indicating
Sure.
the site will be maintained uh during construction and post-construction, during construction, making sure that no uh vehicular drop offs and all is happening. And uh, yes.
Ms. Pranga has her hand up.
Um, so that would be helpful. Uh, did somebody, or John Capozzi? Yeah, allowed to talk, yes. Yes.
Is it Capozzi?
Capozzi. Now, there is another uh hand has been raised uh with initial J C. Is J C and John Capozzi same? So uh if not, I'm letting John Capozzi speak first and then J C.
Oh, Jill is your hand up for some other reason than to?
I just wanted to let you know that um John Capozzi emailed uh our executive director, which he forwarded to you just, just this moment.
While we were in here.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, so who's going first, John Capozzi?
Yes, John Capozzi, and then J C.
Okay.
Mr. Capozzi, can you unmute, please?
They should be able to hear you then.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is John Capozzi, and I have a couple of questions for the board. Uh, my first question is.
Uh, uh, Mr. Capozzi, please uh turn off uh the YouTube.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I would like to start by asking how this, how construction was approved when the variance had expired? And if you're unable to answer this question, should I direct this inquiry to the mayor's office?
Just, uh, we're reading your email. We just received it while we were in hearing, so we haven't had the opportunity to read it. So if you want to read it out, that would be helpful.
Did he ask his first question was the first question?
We don't have to. I want him to read out the whole.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to start by asking how construction was approved for business that had an expired variance. And if you were unable to answer this question, would you suggest that I send an inquiry to the mayor's office?
And what's your second question, Mr. Di, uh, Mr. Capozzi?
My second question, also, I haven't seen cars without plates in the accessory parking lot since the last B S A meeting. But I'm sure, still unclear is how cars is winding up there with no plates on. And if they are customers' cars, how come they don't have plates on them? Shouldn't, when the car is sold, plates be put on it before a customer could pick it up?
Okay. Third question?
Third question. Mr. Dale also stated that administrative work to finalize sales is being done at this location. Everyone knows there is no longer a building there. I'm going to assume the administrative work is being done in two of the small buildings that are between the showroom and the accessory parking lot. The problem with that is that the D O B inspector said that no one should be in the small building while construction was going on. Shortly after the inspector said this, green construction wall was put around the small building. Number four, the variance dated on March seventh, twenty fourteen, says there should be a daily cleaning of debris the area around the property. This doesn't happen. There is a tree on two hundred and fifth street that people use as a garbage can and the garbage sits there for weeks on end. And my last question is, since we've been talking about this, all the variant, every time we talk about a variance, it's always about the um accessory parking lot. Is there a variance on the building itself? These are my questions.
Uh, thank you for sending the email. Um, first of all, um, I guess you didn't hear our hearings from the earlier uh rounds. The, the variance is only applicable to the accessory parking and not to the building uh that is located along the frontage of Northern Boulevard because the zoning regulation, with the recent change in the zoning regulation, um, the use as existing uh is permitted as of right and does not need a use variance at B S A. So the only area of the site that requires a use variance is the accessory parking lot, which is being used for commercial operation located in a residential portion of the district. So it's only the parking lot portion. Uh, uh, it's only that portion. So the answer is D O B, our variance is limited only to the uh, the parking lot. And D O B is responsible for reviewing and approving and for, with regards to the operation, compliance with codes and uh with the with code and zoning regulations uh for uh the as of right portion of the lot, which is fronting on Northern Boulevard. Uh, so much of your question is related to the showroom that is on Northern Boulevard, which the board has no opinion on. It is really for D O B. D O B granted the plan approval ba- because it is an as of right use and D O B reviewed it based on an as of right use and to the maximum extent it's possible.
And I'd just like to add, since the expiration of the variance, the applicant has received thirteen E C B violations from the Department of Buildings for working without a permit. Um, some of them have been sustained in violation, the others haven't had hearings yet. Um, but B S A is not, does not have the jurisdiction to issue permits. Uh, that is purely within the Department of Buildings, uh, who has issued violations for construction without a permit.
Thank you for clearing that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Um, okay. Um, anything else? Anything, um, you're right. No, no, uh, there's another hand, Jay C. This is a different person? Is J C a different person?
Uh, yes. Hi.
Hi. Please say to.
Yeah, this is Jerry, um, the child. We stay, uh, we're in the neighborhood for, uh, lived here more than twenty-five years. Uh, we have attended, uh, you know, hearings uh many times when uh Star Toyota comes for the renew. And every time we are going over the same issue about the site maintenance, the trash is in the neighborhood, doing business on the sidewalk, uh, blocking all the sidewalk, blocking the uh, the fire lane on Northern Boulevard and the uh the parking situation in the back. This is not just a one day or two day, someone forgot and then dropped the uh cars, new cars in the site. It's uh historically, it's the way how to do business and then using the, the parking lot as the place they store their new vehicles. And then also, you know, from time to time, the, the gates will be unlocked. Um, the, you know, leave it unlocked through the night, which is also dangerous for the neighboring uh houses. Um, I understand that every time they always say they will correct it or keep the, maintain the site clean. Uh, but here we are, they get so many different hearings, we're talking about the same thing. So I just want to uh ask the board to consider what kind of condition we need to put it in uh in terms of keeping the um business reliable or, or be responsible for those kind of conditions.
Thank you. Uh, just trying to see, did we put any hours of operation?
Right. Oh, I just want to add.
Yes.
The same call. Um, the, the, the parking is, is the main issue. Um, all the illegal parking that you've seen in the photo.
Please mute, please mute. Wait, I think we're testifying in this.
Testifying, okay, what is your name? I'm sorry.
Someone else?
Yeah, it's someone else.
Oh, I'm, I apologize.
What's uh?
Stay again? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Hi, this is Max Chow. This is the spouse of Jerry.
Okay.
Okay.
Who just spoke. Um, I, I just want to tag along with this call. Uh, parking is the issue. Um, all the photos that, that you've exhibited is the result of lack of parking. And, and this is uh before construction. This has been going on for, for years. And uh thirty percent increase in the square footage with the mezzanine is dependent on your variance as well as the uh certificate of occupancy um that, 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 that will change with the alteration. And that increase in business and occupancy will, will greatly affect the neighborhood. We're already congested, as you can see. Um, this will only get worse. So, so your, your decision is critical here. And, and as you, as you know from the prior meetings, that staging is also being done in the accessory parking. And if that is permissible, um, that, that's gonna lose a lot more parking. That's for customers and employees. Right? This is basically double of the customer parking um that currently exists. Um, that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken? So one question that was brought up, this is Mr. Dale, uh, for Mr. Dale, uh, that uh gates are kept open online all, all night and it seems the business operation, the use of the accessory parking, it, it continues to be used every day. Maybe you got lucky on day you went to the site that there wasn't any parking, but it seems it, it's an ongoing issue. All three members who spoke um stated that. So, um, you know, since our purview is only limited to the accessory parking, um, I want to A, make sure that the business hours were limited to Monday through Thursday, nine A M to nine P M and Friday and Saturday, nine A M to seven P M and Sunday from eleven to five P M. That, regardless of whether your business operation expands or not, that is the business, that is the hours of operation that is going to be held on to for the accessory parking area. That is not going to change. So I want to make sure there is a signage on the, on the ga- on that fence that clearly lays out the hours of operations for that parking, uh, parking space.
We can, son, sorry to interrupt.
Right, it's, and that has, that it has to close by those times. Doesn't matter where your business operation, uh, when it closes or not because this affects the residential portion of the site abouting residential uses. Um, and uh the other thing is that outside, it should just say employee parking and customer parking. And uh, and I would like to know how much of pickup and delivery that is happening on a daily basis. How many vehicles are you expecting to be picked up on? Um, and because if this is being used as a place to store vehicles uh that are going to be picked up. So remind me, when, when, let's say if I purchase a vehicle and I'm going to pick it up and you're going to keep that car in that parking lot, it is not going to have a ni- license plate until I come there and take ownership?
That's, that's correct normally, or if they have the license plate in time, they'll, they'll put it on ahead of time. Um, the window, the windows, my understanding, what they tell me is that they will reach out to a customer when there's a purchase. Now, if the customer is there, they'll wait until a car is brought from the off-site inventory, but they'll uh seek to arrange windows uh and bring the cars uh to the lot so the customers can pick it up. And then the license plates are put on at that time. Um, I believe that somewhere in a prior submission, we had the number of vehicles sold, but I can reiterate that in a in an upcoming submission. Uh, I was trying to find it while we were here, but I can't find the most recent submission, but I can, I can resubmit that in a cover letter to confirm uh what the expected number of sales are per day.
Yeah, per day, yeah.
Um, I just wanted to add, I do know that when you're purchasing a car, if you want to keep your license plate, that doesn't get done till the very last minute because you're driving in your plate, then they take it off the car you're returning.
That's.
And they put it in your car.
So you, if you're seeing unlicensed vehicle cars, it is not being used for storage, it is, these are for customer pickups. And there, once they bring their car in, then only the transfer of licenses happening.
Yeah, if they do a D M V transfer, otherwise at times they will put the light, they'll put.
Temporary, if it's a new car, you never had a license, that's a new one that you're going to get a temporary license, I have, right, something like that.
Or, or a permanent one, but yeah.
Okay. Um, and the other question is, are there vehicles parked post-business hours in that area? There shouldn't be.
Uh, there shouldn't be, we agree um that there, there, there won't be and that the, the gate would be locked during uh off-hours. So we can, so we can submit uh an affidavit from the owner, uh, as discussed earlier, with the uh owner signing an affidavit clarifying that they understand and will uh iterate in the affidavit what the use of this parking area uh is permitted for. Um, we'll update the plans and put a sample sign on the plans uh noting uh the hours of operations and that it's for employee customer parking only. Um, we would agree that the business hour conditions be maintained, no changes are sought. And then I'll, I'll review again prior submissions and just restate in a cover letter what the uh, the estimated average sales are per day.
Customer parking and customer pickup.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you could make those divisions, that would be helpful. Uh, any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
How much time do you need, Mr. Dale?
I mean, we could submit this, the, the non-plan items by the end of the week, well, actually by middle of next week. So let's, let's say by uh, not this Friday, but. So let's, let's say by uh not this Friday, but next Friday, just to allow time if they need something.
Okay. I was hoping if you could submit it by Monday morning, by Monday, I could slate you in for April. But that, 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 that won't give us enough time to review.
Um, okay, because I was gonna say, like, unfortunately, I'm out of the office and out of the city. Start from the end of the week, so it's gonna be a little tough to make this Monday.
Fair enough, and and I want you to.
Right.
I want you to do a thorough job on it, so we will get this to the May schedule then.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get the affidavit, the plan update, uh uh restate that information in the, in the cover letter.
How do the commissioners feel about closing it?
Um, I don't know if it's, uh, I know you stated this before in the hearing, but to the Chows that spoke earlier. I just wanted to clarify, the mezzanine is not part of the proposal anymore. Even if it were, um, that portion of the project is as of right in its commercial district. And as the chair stated earlier today, the parking per is from a zoning point of view is voluntary. And with the increase or the enlargement or the improvements that they are making to the building, which is not in our jurisdiction, they still are not required to provide any parking. So the statement that the variance is dependent on um this increase or that the parking is somehow dependent on this increase is not true according to the regulations that apply to the commercial portion of the site. So I just wanted to say that because we're not ignoring you. It has been discussed at length in all of these hearings. It's quite technical, but um just want to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Yun, for clarifying that. Yes, um it's there are situations where a portion of the site is in our juris- jurisdiction and the other is not, and this is one of those situations. And this has really come about with the recent change in the zoning text. Um and we can only focus on the, our, our jurisdiction is limited to just the parking lot. Um and DOB ensures that any enlargement on this site that is happening is complying with all the regulations, including parking. Okay, uh again, I really do appreciate community boards calling in, expressing their concerns because this helps us uh guide the applicant in, in terms of how they have to monitor. And uh and should the applicant fail to uh comply, uh there is a process by which uh uh people can file a compliance, uh file a complaint to DOB, to us. And then we can check whether the, the site is complying or not and may call in for compliance hearing. But please note, do respect the business process and the timeline. And I know many of us are auto owners, so we know what the process it takes. So um you know, within those bounds is what we can do and what the operator should be doing, no more than that. Um, okay. I I want to make a motion to close with the record open for submission of the revised plans affidavit. And uh which will spell out the operational plans specific to the parking.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will schedule for discussion in May.
May?
Yeah.
Item number ten, twenty-six ninety-three BZ eight eighty, Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
I think she had Gerard last time. I don't see Gerard.
Hi, we should also have Eric Main.
Yeah, I see Eric.
Um, me, I don't know if I pronounced his name right, I apologize.
Yes, I've let Eric main.
Eric, if you could unmute and show yourselves possible. Okay, hi, thank you. How do you pronounce your last name?
It's mine.
Mine, okay, there you go, Eric mine, sorry.
Okay, that's the only two? That's it?
Uh, yeah.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the whole, nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly board member questions?
I do. Thank you.
For the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Um Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnick PC, um on behalf of the applicant, thank you so much. We listened to your comments. I first wanted to go through, I spoke with a representative from the owner operator. There's like a lot of levels in McDonald's, but I got ahold of her and we went through your comments. Um and I would like to share the BSA resolutions to show you what was previously approved and then discuss what we discussed based on your comments, because I think that'll help clarify, because there's a lot of different. As you pointed out, there's a lot of different times with a lot of different parts of the operations. So I just want to go through that with you and then I will clarify in writing after as well. So here we go. Everyone can see this, right? Mm-hmm, okay. So it had the hours of operation of the restaurant from seven AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and seven AM to midnight, Friday and Saturday. And it's had seven AM to midnight daily for the drive-through. So we heard that you don't want till one AM and we understand that, but wondering if we can continue to do seven AM to midnight daily for the drive-through. Okay. Um so I guess that was the first question. And then the next question was, um if you're okay, right now, also to let you know that right now it does operate seven AM to eleven PM every single day. But that is what, just for the future, if you would, if you're open to it, that is what we would request, if you're okay with it. And then we also wanted to know if it was possible, when this happened, um a pickup window for delivery with different, you know, because delivery is a big, a big business now. Uh wasn't really a thing, but now that's a huge part of their business. So if they would be, if you would permit them to close off all the parking in the drive-through, whatever time you feel appropriate, but allow just that pickup window in the front to remain open till one AM, that would be another thing we would ask if, if, if you'd be okay with that.
So, okay, so I think what would be helpful, I understand what you're saying, is that there are different of business operations and different hours. So pickup will happen till one AM and pickup, when the pickup is happening, aren't people coming by cars or?
No, we would close off all the car stuff. You'd either have to come by, you'd have to come by foot or I guess a bike and quickly pick it up. But you couldn't use, we'd close off the parking element of it, because we understand there's residences in the rear. So you couldn't do that anymore, no more drive-through after midnight.
No do, no more drive-through and no more uh parking even on the parking lot?
Yeah, just for that element of it, because that's what it seems like if you would want, we're trying to find a compromise.
Okay.
And then we could close off with the chain link, because before, if you see too, it had, what was confusing is it said to just close up the back till nine PM, but we don't think that makes, and so that's where the confusion came. And we don't think that makes much sense, as you pointed out. I think it would make sense to just close off the whole queuing, parking, whenever the operations closes for the drive-through and the parking lot.
Do you ever get people who drive in to sit and eat in the restaurant, like late at night?
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is we could close that portion of it too, if that's what the board wanted.
Who, where would they park then? They're just.
No, I'm saying that you couldn't, they couldn't come after midnight, they would.
So I think Ms. Fullader, uh in, to be consistent.
Yeah.
The eating and drinking establishment is as of right and it is permitted in the C eight district, right? So our limitation is with the drive-through and a timed timeline. So we definitely do not want the drive-through be uh true to be extended to one AM and you're proposing till midnight, seven days of the week.
Yeah.
So the rest of the business operation can continue as of right, provided, and that is probably the reason why those parking spaces in the residential portion was asked to be chained. Because no parking would be permitted in the residential portion.
Yeah.
Uh for business operation. So only business operational uh parking will happen in the portion that is within the C eight and within the twenty-five foot of C eight.
Yeah, and I understand that, but it's kind of hard to chain the.
It's not that, you, you can take the.
You want to chain across the whole site?
Well, no, I mean, the parking area, you can just put a right, you can just take a chain from one side, put two uh bollards on.
It's these three and these three.
Yeah.
Okay, you want us to chain?
To, so, so we're not trying to impose on something that we cannot impose.
Okay, it's just, it's a little weird, that's why I'm asking.
Figure out a solution. We, you know, figure out a solution, we, we, you're putting, you're putting more imposition on yourself than we are asking you to.
Okay, so I can ask them if they can do a chain after midnight? That's okay?
Yeah.
It's like, what's weird too is some, these are, this is the required number of parking we need for the building, even though it's in the R district.
That's a good point.
So it's like, it's a weird, that's why I was trying to say that, like, if you want them people to stop coming in with cars and disturbing the rear after a certain point.
And it is only one-way entry and one-way exit, right?
Yeah, and this is pictures of the cha- of here, see, and it's kind of both, it's, there's really no good way to do it, unfortunately.
In that case, I would say in that case, you should, you should just chain the drive-through.
But in the middle, like, put a bollard in the middle here?
Parking is permitted as of right.
Right.
That, that parking has got to utilize the drive-through to get out.
Okay, that's a point, yeah. The existing one didn't have to rely on it, right? Oh, no, it did, it still did.
Yeah, it's not changed that much, it's just we, we, we kind of extended the, the drive-through element for maneuverability purposes. But the layout is pretty much.
Okay, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
I mean, customarily to, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, Eric mine, I'm with Bowler with the Civil on the project. Um customarily, to shut down the drive-through, a lot of times they'll just place a cone in the drive-through area where the menu boards are so people know they can't come in order, that would, you know, maintain the maneuverability. You know, certainly, if they're not taking orders at, after a certain time, they're not taking orders. Um but we're amenable to, you're working with you to come up with a solution.
That still doesn't address the, the issue of the driving when you're leaving your parking spot, swinging around the back of the building to get out, and you're then driving around into the R and utilizing the R zone.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I'm saying, I think the easiest, I'm not trying to impose, but I think the easiest is.
That's fine, okay.
You're, when you're done, and that, and it's only another hour, it's just to get in that delivery business, you know, where people are tired. They stayed up late and they want to get food in the middle of the night. Uh, sorry, um and then um I also spoke with her, I, she was a little misunderstood, like, we had a little misunderstanding, me and her, about there's two types of deliveries, right? There's the delivery we just discussed, and then there's deliveries of food to the site. So those deliveries, we spoke about it, and they try to do them at um around five AM and they will have access to get through. But um I asked her if it's possible, and she said no problem, that they send an email to the company. And if you're good with this, they'll do it to the trash and to the delivery company to make sure that they only deliver between five AM and midnight. And don't do, um, you know, keep it in that time, so it's not to disturb the residences in the rear. Because usually they try to do off-hours, but I, I understand that it would be crazy to do it too late or too early. Um, okay, I hope that addresses that. Um and then I think that, okay, and then while I can go to the plans, but Eric, I don't know if you prefer to share or you want me to share, I don't know what you prefer. And then we can talk about their design comments.
Um I guess it's probably easier for me to share than my.
So you can go. So Eric is going to help address the comments about the, the extension of the drive-through, the trash, the um section and the landscaping you discussed, but we can go back through each one of them, but Eric, I go to you.
Yeah, first, um I'll just start with kind of the adjustments, just to make it clear what we're, we're trying to do to improve the maneuverability. So this is the existing condition, and you'll see that the stalls are only fifteen point three feet deep with a ten foot, ten point four foot um bypass lane. And then to the rear, we have angled parking back here. So going to the proposed condition, we're pushing the curb back slightly. Um we are proposing the new fence with acousta block material. Um so now we get a more appropriate seventeen point three foot depth to these stalls and a thirteen foot aisle, which provides, you know, more appropriate of it uh maneuverability. Um and then we switch the stalls at the rear to parallel stalls. Um this helps in a couple ways, A, um if people are parked back there, they're oriented properly to get out of the site. Um you have a more maneuverable lane, and we also were able to increase the radius at the drive-through. Um the current configuration is probably a twelve or fifteen foot radius, which the modern car wheelbase is, that, that's a very tight turn. Um so in the proposed condition, we get to an eighteen foot, which is much easier to follow. Um then to address the drive-through lane, um we are proposing a concrete drive-through lane, which will differ from the asphalt in the bypass lane. And we are proposing a stripe as well. Um there's also proposed striping to indicate this is the drive-through lane, and we'll have separate arrows um for the remainder. Uh Elise, is there anything else you wanted me to touch on?
Yeah, but I first wanted to go back to that point. Is there a way we can show that designation of different materials that you would help address that? Because I.
Absolutely, we could do it by legend um and, and specific call-out, but you could see we intended with this uh different hatch from the two materials to show it's different, but we, we will make it more explicit.
Does that work for the commissioners? Okay, cool. And then I wanted you to just touch on why the landscaping in the rear, you can't plant that there, they questioned.
Along the northern line.
Yeah, so the northern line, the existing condition, it's, it's, it's um not deep enough. And all we're doing is, is pushing the curb back again to improve the maneuverability here, to in- increase these dimensionally. So you can actually pull in and get out of these stalls and circumnavigate the site. So we, we're still providing enough room to put the fence. These are all mature trees on the property next door that are shielding um the windows above, so we're not proposing to modify that. Um and just to get back to the, the end of fence commentary and the number of linear feet, um that includes the full perimeter over, and I think our number differs from maybe what was calculated because we're running in to the trash here. Um so I think it's just these two dimensions that were deviating. Uh we're at two fifty-five and I think you were up around um two eighty or so. I think that's the differential. But we have zero lotline building here, that's where the fence starts or ends, and a zero lotline building here, that's where it starts or ends. And otherwise, it fully encompasses the site.
You're saying that the fence is not going to be like present with the trash enclosure as, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, the trash enclosure itself is the fence, the same material. So to, to your point, we can strip off the linear footage and just indicate it will circumnavigate the rear of the site from building to building.
Yes, but the, 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 the trash enclosure, is it black or so, or it's just a?
It's, what construction is the trash enclosure? I guess that's the best way to put it. It should be of masonry construction with metal uh door.
Uh yeah, so it'll be masonry construction, yeah, with the doors at the front.
Okay.
Okay, so that mean you don't need a acoustical fence within that?
Correct, it's, it's gonna run in at this point here.
Okay.
And then. Plan the material that is proposed, uh because it's now in the R five portion, you have to provide more clarity as to the kind of material uh that has been proposed for the trash enclosure and the metal and provide the detail.
Okay, we, we will do that.
And the height.
Will do.
And I'll talk about the rodent control measures.
Yeah, definitely. Um I'll ask to the operator, maybe they can get us something from the company they use. But we also, I just wanted to add too, that we think that the rodent controls and maneuverability will be easier because you don't want to spray where the food is, obviously, and the trash being separated and not attached to the building, but in a separate area, we think will be a cleaner way to deal with it. And then Eric, you're also gonna speak about, kind of, we're restricted in zoning a little bit because of where to put the trash.
Yeah, there's a provision, there's a zoning provision where you can't have the trash enclosure within fifty feet of the right-of-way. So that limits us to the rear of the site as it is. Um and then back to Elise. Um, and then back to Elise's point, you know. Moving it away from the building would be beneficial in a lot of ways to to make it cleaner, easier um from a road control perspective. And just to just to add, I know there was concern with the residences to the rear. This location is still over fifty feet from the nearest residence because of uh the right away that's behind us.
Um, but we can address that in the findings again, we can, I can get a little more detailed in the five findings about how we think this is better for maneuverability. And better for cleanup and better for the neighborhood. And not that close, you know, it's still only a little bit over that second line, we're not right on top of the residence system. Um, as you pointed out, and then um. What was the next question? There was another, oh, um Commissioner Yun's comment about the section.
Yeah.
Um, Eric, do you remember about the the A V C section, you can?
Oh, yeah, that's something, yeah, uh, we will enhance that, it that. That is to scale for the driveway portion, but not for the landscape planting portion, so we'll make it clear from a horizontal dimensionality and a vertical. We'll provide it to scale version, yeah, I I acknowledge it's it the it's not still fully to scale, so we'll get that over to you. It was presented in a conservative manner, but we'll make it accurate, so you know what you're looking at.
Um.
Okay, the bottom. Um, obviously, totally not to scale.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, because I feel like I've asked for this a couple of times and I don't know why it's still not scale. Yeah, if you zoom in, you can see where ten feet is and where four feet is and three.
But I I believe the ten, the fifteen and eight are to scale, it's the remainder that's not, so it's only gonna help us, because this actually gets shoved over, so. But yeah, we'll 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 document it, so you can see the scale in both dimensions.
The colored decibel lines are also to scale, because then. That doesn't. What we need to know is where those colored lines and how they align relative to the section of the actual site. So I'm trying to put those two together and I feel like there's been a diagram, just copy and paste it over something else, and none of it is. Dimensionally accurate in my brain, so. I think you understand what I'm asking for, I need to work and represent what's actually happening.
Absolutely.
These are two, four, eight, sixteen, right? Distances. Is that correct? The contours.
Correct.
Yeah, at the at the apex of the diagram, diagonal. We are two, four, eight, sixteen, and so on, right?
Yes, correct.
Uplink distances. Yeah, so they should be, they should be like, put them to scale. On the diagram itself, yeah, and if you wanna, I I'm not sure if Commissioner uh Yun would accept that. But if you want to use distorted scale for the horizontal, you have a scale, and for the vertical, you have a scale for clarity. To make that diagram more readable, I am okay with that.
Great, yeah, I appreciate it, I think that'll provide a hundred percent clarity, we'll do it.
Yeah, because sometimes if if you make the two scales same. Is that diagram is gonna look like it's 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 not readable, so. If if you want to make that this distinction between the horizontal and the vertical scale, make it distorted scale. But just add the scale, the scale horizontal is this, the scale vertical is this.
Yes.
Uniform scale for each direction.
Yes, understood, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Elise, would you like me to unshare?
Oh, sure, um, and I think that was all the comments unless you think I missed any.
Yep, I think uh. So please revise the statements and the drawings with a cover letter. Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so the one, the midnight to one AM operation is we have a chain across. The exit and the entry to the parking areas, and there is a pickup window for basically delivery people on bikes and scooters to come. To the front of the building along the frontage and get what they need.
Yeah, and I guess I will just confirm, though, where the delivery window is.
And I'm assuming if I'm hungry, I'll be after midnight, I can walk in there also.
Yeah, you could get from the pickup window too, you could walk over and order from the pickup window.
So, yeah, let us know where the pickup window is.
Yeah. Eric, do you know by any chance offhand, is it either, sorry, there's a lot on here.
I'm pretty sure it's at the southeast corner here, I'll share real quick again, but I will also confirm with operations, just to be doubly sure. That this is how they're gonna use it, that it's this vestibule, you can see there's a door to and from the kitchen. And I believe the the door inside, if the dining rooms closed, they'll close those doors, but this vestibule will be open and they'll be able to. Give food out through here, but I will confirm and we will provide the narrative.
Yeah, and we'll put a note on the plans just to make it extra clear where the pickup.
You know, the dining room door will close?
Um.
Night or one?
What are you open to? I was, I asked for the, I did it like, I asked like this because I was trying to find a compromise. Do you care if the dining room is open at one, if the parking is?
Uh, uh, if the parking is blocked, you can keep it open.
Okay, then then that, we could do it like that too, I was just trying to find, because we understood that you wanted to close off like. You know, vehicles by what by.
Right, if you're not parking, that is, but if that's going to be an operational challenge and it's going to be difficult. Then maybe you close the dining area also at the same time as you're closing the parking area, but keep the. Your pickup window open for whatever duration you want to.
Yeah, I think that's what I thought would be the easiest.
If you think operationally it is going to be difficult to. Close the parking area and keep the dining area open, then close it and just have the pickup.
Okay, and.
That business, that's your business decision, but you need to make it very clear.
Yes, definitely.
What you're closing, keeping and hours.
Yeah, so I'm gonna give a call back to the representative from operations and ask her what would be easiest, and I'll explain that in a cover letter. Do we need to know the dining? Closing hours, we don't even need.
We don't, we don't need to know. We don't need to know it, but that will be close. Right, we don't need to know that, but it's just that you need to be aware of it in terms of your operationally, what you're planning to do and what you're proposing.
Makes sense.
We are controlling only the fact that the space will be chained up.
Makes sense. Because that's the portion in the R five.
Yeah. Okay. Can we go to the public? Let's go to the public, thank you.
Oh, I, sorry.
Go ahead.
I also would like to say that we met with the community board, but only the land use. Um, on the eighteenth.
Oh, yeah.
And they recommended support, but with the facts, and one person wrote in about maintaining trash. So I'm also gonna get you pictures to show you that it's maintained, and I spoke to the operator about it. And I I am unsure when their full board is, but we did meet with the land use on the eighteenth. So I have to get back about.
You know when the full board is gonna vote?
I don't know, so they didn't get back to us when the full board's gonna vote yet, so um. Like, I will figure that out.
Alright, thank you. Let's go to the public then.
So the case that we're currently discussing is twenty-six ninety-three B Z eight eighty, Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one, one six nine, two seven, one five, and press the pound sign. Once you're permitted, oh, the next prompt will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized in any form, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
How much time will you need to make these changes?
Eric, my guess, I'm gonna guess, and you can tell me if I'm right, but I would say you need approximately two weeks, just to make sure you have all the things in order, is that?
Yeah.
Accurate?
I mean, we could probably, i- if it means we could get on the April calendar, if we get it in by. Uh, Friday or next Monday, then then we could do that, no, okay.
I didn't think she would say that, but you know her now.
No, uh, the thing, we need at least a week to review it, if you're gonna submit it Friday, the day before the hearing, that's doesn't give us enough time to review it.
Okay, give us two weeks then, so we can make it bulletproof, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I I don't want you to keep coming in um for little changes, so take your time to make the corrections to the plans. To the statement of facts and findings and everything, so we'll schedule this for May. Um, but I want to know if the board, you, are you okay with closing it? Because I think the main question, we were okay with the the trash enclosure and the drive-through being in the R five portion. But you need to provide a, and we understand the reasoning, and as Commissioner, you did also what's behind that. Uh, R five site is right of way, so the impact to the residential uses is minimal. They're thirty feet away from that property, uh, so I think those arguments need to be iter uh re- restated. To justify why this additional encroachment will not increase the degree of our hardship.
Makes sense, and I think that having it in May then also gives me time to make sure that all these are.
Yeah, you're handling a lot of cases also, so I. No, we, that's what I want to make sure, the commissioners, are you okay with closing it or you want to close it in May?
I'm, I'm.
I'm okay with closing it. Okay, uh, close then.
Motion to close, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shobeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Sorry, say vice chair. Okay, item number, thank you, item number.
Thank you.
One fifteen ninety-four B Z twenty-four seventy Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
That's again, Ms. Flodder.
Raise your right hand. Do you have anyone else with you?
Oh, yes, I have Glenn, who you definitely know. And I also have um Howard. Who is the owner or a representative of the owner, actually.
Who's Glenn, is that Glenn? Anything else?
And I see Howard, if you don't see Glenn, honestly, I don't think he necessarily needs to be here. I think that Howard is helpful, just in case we have operational things to talk about.
Yeah, I let him in.
Okay. Howard, can you unmute and show yourself if possible? Howard, can you hear us? Can you speak? No, I see you unmuted, now try to speak.
Put your camera on, please.
I can't even hear him, he might have to call in. And you call in. I'm texting him.
His hand is raised again, I don't know what he's doing.
I know, maybe his computer's now working, but I can give him the the dial in.
I am asking him to unmute and asking him to stop the video.
Well, he's having trouble with his computer, so I'm giving him the the to call in.
Okay.
Sorry. Bye.
Okay. I did. One, six, one. Six, nine. Seven. Oh.
Okay, hopefully he, I gave him the ID and the phone number to see if that works.
I'm here.
Okay. Oh. Oh, no, Eric, we don't need you anymore.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This is another hearing.
Got it, alright. Good one, everybody.
Goodbye, Mr. Mine. Okay. Howard, his.
Can we start without Mr. Katanowitz?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Where you went, and when he's available, we can.
Swear amen.
Okay, um, do you, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you so much.
Your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Elise Flodder from Eric Palanick C, thank you so much, um, we heard your comments today. Uh, I first wanted to say that um I need to update a cover letter and statement of facts. Um, I overlooked that at our community board meeting, the tenants came as well as Howard. And they said that they, the community was obviously very concerned about doing work and cleaning up within the hours. And they asked if they could have an additional hour at the end of the night, so when they, after they close, they actually have time to clean up the site. So that's why those extended hours are there. Um, because they want to make sure they get off the site in the times, but they do need extra time to. You know, after they do all the work, to put everything away and clean up, so if we could have it amended for an extra hour, like they asked. It would be extremely helpful for operations.
An amendment, uh.
Okay.
Also, isn't that, I mean, we're just restricting the hours of operation, not.
Right.
The ancillary, I mean, McDonald's is restricted to some timeframe, but they're gonna have trash pickup at five AM. It's not like we're saying you can't maintain your site in those.
Yeah, after the business hours.
I it would be for fear of the operations then extending within that window when we're trying to curb them.
Okay, it's whatever you see, we just, we want, we really wanted to be clear about, like, if there are people working, cleaning up there, we don't want everybody to say, well, you went against. You know, the B S A and start complaining, you're not operating per your agreement, and it's just, that's the tricky part.
So I think the best way to say the last customer can be accepted is. Is till eight, whatever, and after that, wh- whatever the hours are, I think. The current hours are nine AM to six. Nine AM to six, so.
They want seven to, oh, never mind.
Wanted eight to seven, to extend on either to open and to get everything together and to close and to. Maybe something like customers can only be received within the hours of nine and six?
Something like that. The business can open, the problem is, it becomes an operational thing, I really think, because there's been so many issues with this site. Having that clarity is going to be helpful for everybody. Because if if a car, if the store is open, somebody will come in and they'll say, well, you know, I don't want to lose my customer, and then I'm gonna let them in. You're, I think in this situation, it would be better to have one timeframe for everything.
True.
Um. But, um, I, Mr. Kassanza, if if this is a change in the. I mean, I think other thing I want to be very clear, that the last hearing we had on this. Was in twenty twenty, and we had given at that time an extension of term for eighteen months. The whole idea was, this is basically, the follow-up hearing is going to be a compliance hearing. Almost like that, we wanted to make sure that you, ev- everything on this side is happening per. Uh, B S A conditions, and if everything worked, then we would consider having a a longer extension term.
Understood.
So, uh, I know we received a letter from the district manager saying what happened to the compliance. Well, we may not be calling it a compliance hearing, but that really was the intention of the board to grant it an eighteen, we never grant. I mean, not never, rarely, rarely do we grant an eighteen-month extension, and when we granted it, really is equal to. A follow-up compliance hearing. So I just want to be very clear, because I know people are listening in, um.
So Howard too, by the way, says he can only hear it right now, he called and he can hear the audio, so what can he do to get let in?
He has to call in.
Well, he's called in and he can hear the audio right now in his phone.
You took star six to unmute?
Try star six. Howard, if you can hear.
And we just let Glenn Katrona in, he needs to be sworn in if he has to speak. And we have to swear in Mr.
I more think that I don't necessarily need Glenn to speak at all, I just wanted, you know, if we're talking about like compliance and operations.
Okay. Okay.
I wanted Howard.
I don't, it seems you you're, you don't have to be here, it's but it's.
Yeah, he can smile, but I feel like. Unless you want him to speak, uh Glenn's office has been reaching out about the trees, which you've seen, um, he took to. To the Parks Department and he followed up with the Parks Department.
Okay, do you know what? Just swear everybody in.
Okay. But I don't know if we can hear Howard yet. I don't know what to do about Howard.
If you can unmute star six to unmute if he's calling in on the phone.
Did you try to?
You can hear me, star six.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'm sorry, uh, this is Carlo. I think you were starting to ask me a procedural question about the hours, but um, in this instance, if this is something that's been requested by the community board and at the board's discretion were to change the hour, then that would just be a condition and not necessarily require a formal filing of an amendment.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Do you want me to swear in any?
Yes.
And he told, he says that he, it keeps saying I can only join as an attendee after trying star six or pound. I don't know what to do.
Okay.
Hold on one second, I'm um.
Okay, why don't you swear in Mr. Katrona? He can speak to the tree thing and then we can, um, maybe by that time, um.
Yeah. All right, Glenn, let me ask where you went. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions?
Do.
Okay, good.
Go ahead, Mr. Katrona.
State your name for the record.
Hi, Glenn Katrona, um, Madam Chair. Um, we, uh, in the community rooms, uh, we filed with Parks Department. And as you would note in the correspondence that we received, uh, the response that they are going to visit, inspect the site and at that particular point give us additional direction. Uh, based on zoning rules, regulations, we see that there's a possibility of planting one tree. Unless the parks uh gives us any different uh feedback on that there, but we're waiting for that inspection to happen. I put out a request uh for an updated status, but had not received the response as of yet. Um, I also heard you say during the review session that we should reach out to community board. Maybe they can reach out to parks. I don't know if BSA does that as well, but we'll continue to follow up. And once we hear, um, we'll take the act, appropriate action to uh, to plant. Uh, the owner has reached out to a landscape scaping company at this point because we needed to identify a landscaping company. So in the event that we um receive in a, you know, a direction uh to plant, uh, things are in place right now. So that we can take action on that.
Thank you. That is a good update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Mr. Katrona.
Excuse me?
I said it's good to see you.
Good to see everyone as well. Thank you.
Have you resolved uh Mr. Kuzanovic's issue?
No, unfortunately.
Uh, unfortunately, oh, nice doggy.
Sorry, he's trying to.
He's trying to. Okay. Unfortunately, of cases today, so we really cannot uh prolong the.
Sorry, I don't want to. I'm sorry. I just thought it was helpful. So he, he constantly monitors the site, as you noticed, and he, um, we provided videos and photographs and at different points in time to just show you what happened. And I think you saw that he was doing that. And I just wanted him to reiterate that and, and, and show you that he is constantly monitoring the site and trying to work with neighbors and it's, it's been very difficult.
Problem you have is that you have two similar uses right next to each other and it is very difficult to distinguish who's, who is doing what. And so I think him being vigilant and monitoring, especially video recording um, uh, through his camcorder, uh, whatever the, those video mo- uh, things are there. And uh, using that because, you know, whenever these issues are going to come up, you have to then rely on those documents to kind of back up. Um, that you're not parking because the photographs you submitted and the photographs I just recent, I just now uh got, that is from the district manager, who uh, I guess is in a different point, has a different point of view than the community board. Um, provided a uh s- uh series of photos of the site conditions and they are same as what you have provided, but, but the problem is to distinguish between whose cars are parked on the sidewalk, whose car is uh parked uh parked on the curb by the curb side because the, both the businesses are right next to each other. And uh, it, it, uh. So I think the only way your client can assure everybody is by monitoring um the site. And like I said, if you want to put a sticky on your car, the cars that your, your client is working on making really clear, hey, mine does not have a red dot. Uh, this does not have a red dot, so it's not mine. And therefore, you can, I mean, the, the, there are some simple ways. I'm not, in my simple mind, I think calling it simple, it may not be simple, but some other ways of making sure it's a clear visual distinction that is being made so that no, any passerby cannot say, oh, this is, this guy is.
Understood.
Overspilling. Mr. Kuzanovic, sorry, go ahead, uh, for Ms. Flodare and then Mr. Katrona.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'll let Glenn speak first because he has his memory.
Yes, I thought you was finished. So, okay.
If I, if I just might say, um, I had gone out there numerous times over the course of this year, uh proceeding. Uh, lastly, to take photographs of the site, the interior of the site. The interior, as you can see, uh, in the tire component, it's absolutely meticulous. These tenants realize that their business relies on getting this point across. Okay, it's very difficult for me to say what I see on the adjacent sites, but I will tell you. These tenants realize that their business depends on it. This is hampering them to move forward. Um, you know, because it's a veil. Um, but I really, really would uh say that from my perspective, and I didn't set a meeting. I showed up at the site. There was not a car parked in the frontage of this particular location on the sidewalk or in front of it. And from a cleanliness perspective, these businesses and this establishment looks really clean. Um, and you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the adjacent, but you know, I hope that makes uh some sort of sense. Uh, they want to move forward and hopefully we get a good result here and then everybody can move on and monitor and do whatever. It's a difficult situation. I, I think it's a bad hand that's being dealt uh there personally. But I just wanted to say that there from my perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Katanovic, are you trying to get in again? I don't know. Can he hear us?
He's, he really wants to be heard and that's why he keeps texting me. I don't know.
Uh, uh, you know, uh, unfortunately, we have spent quite a bit of time on this and because of technical difficulties, I know it's not possible. If he wants to, he can send a letter or he can even send a voicemail. Uh, if it makes it easier, we will hear it. Um, but um, I think.
I understand.
And I won't open it up to public because I know there are people who would want to speak.
No problem.
Okay, we're going to open up to the public. So um, the case that we're currently discussing is one fifteen ninety-four B Z. Thank you, Jella. Twenty-four seventy B, nah, twenty-four seventy Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to comment on this, dial six four six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone in order to be heard. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hands at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. Ms. Campbell is in the room. She doesn't get time or she's district. Okay, yes. Ms. Campbell?
I do.
Hi.
Yeah.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. Thank, thank you for this opportunity. Um, and I do recognize that uh my board has voted to approve this application with uh, with some soft conditions, namely that the applicant follow the law. Um, and I understand that there is some confusion with the behavior of twenty-four seventy versus twenty-four sixty. Um, but in many ways, it's, it's easy to see the difference in the use of the sidewalk and the use of the street. And I've been able to substantiate um by going over there several times, about a dozen times in the last month and taking pictures about eight of those times, um, where twenty-four seventy is using cones in the sidewalk, uh storing vehicles on, um, not cones in the sidewalk and in the street to um guard some parking on the street and around the vehicles that they're working on in the street. I also have substantiation from my partners uh at the seven oh police precinct, um, an email uh back in January when they towed some cars from twenty-four eighty-four that actually belonged to twenty-four seventy. And then um back on the first of March, when there was a tow operation and um, um, workers from twenty-four seventy came out. Hello?
Kuzanovic, could you hold off speaking, please? Just while Ms. Campbell is speaking?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, so my concern here is that to the extent that there are conditions, oh, and the board would have very much, uh, was very much in support of putting trees. Um, is one of the conditions, but uh Ms. Full of Dare uh advised them that they couldn't do it since it wasn't in the plan. Um, so I'd be happy to be of assistance um in, in that pursuit. Um, I, I guess my concern is because we, this goes back to twenty eighteen and even earlier, this inability to really ensure adherence from these um on this variance. If what BSA will do, whether it's a compliance hearing and how we can um assure the people who live closer by um, that this compliance will actually begin at some point.
Um, thank you. If you missed what I said, uh, this hearing is coming up eight, uh, board had granted a term for eighteen months. Board typically doesn't grant a term for eighteen months. Eighteen months is what, in this case was granted. Instead of calling it officially a compliance hearing, basically it was saying your term is going to be up after eighteen months and we will do it at that time to make sure you're complying with it. So it's really a follow-up uh extension of a term which, but with a compliance part of the, they, all our extension terms are compliance related. So this is also another one of them. So it is very consistent with what the board has done. And in this case, the unusual nature of it was that it was an eighteen month term that was granted. Typically, at a minimum, we would gun five years, uh, but in this case eighteen months. So that is a compliance hearing, uh, and that is what is being held now.
So I. Now I underst- yeah, now I understand and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Um. I, I would say it is very difficult from the photos for any one of us to uh verify which car belongs to whom and who has what on the sidewalk. I do see consistency in the photo that you have shared um and that the, uh, and that the applicant has shared. Uh, that is, there are these big cones that are on the sidewalk, uh, that is abutting the subject site, which is to prevent any side parking on the sidewalk. Uh, but there are vehicles that are parked on the sidewalk, but that is not abutting the subject site. And uh, you know, at this point, it's a, it's a, uh, it's kind of an alleged statement without any. And this is where I keep uh requesting uh the property owner to be extremely vigilant with their video monitoring on a regular twenty-seven, uh, twenty-four seven basis to give this assurance to the community, the residents, that every operation that is happening on the site is per, is complying with what the board conditions are. And they can back it up with all the evidence that they're collecting through the video monitoring on a daily basis.
Yeah, the, the video is not going to speak as, as, as loudly to me as my own eyes when I'm over there. But I, and I, and I'll get NYPD to substantiate when they speak to um this particular location. I do not think that there's a lot of parking on the sidewalk by the applicant. It is more of the use of the street and the cones in the street. Um, um, that continues to be a problem. Also, for the, the hearing that preceded this, I can tell you CB twelve is voting on, on the McDonald's application tomorrow night.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Um, any other speakers? I just. Anyone, anyone.
The, the owner is, has his hand up. He's there.
Okay. All right. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Kuzanovic, please speak.
Let me swear you in though.
Sure.
Do you, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board's member questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record and proceed to speak.
Howard Kuzanovic.
Okay.
I represent my mother-in-law, who's the actual owner of the property. She's eighty-five years old. Um, so I'm basically the property manager at this point. I've been at the site basically five days a week since the last hearing. Um, we have videos proving these cars, we, the reason the cones are in the street is to prevent double parking, which Ms. Campbell complained about. So we try to keep cones out there so no one's double parking. But we did submit a video showing a flatbed trailer blocking our property, unloading cars into twenty-four sixty um, and continuously blocking our property. Uh, unfortunately, I, we can't control that, but we are vigilantly monitoring our property, making sure that we're complying with everything the board is looking for. Uh, their livelihood, our tenants, the community, we supplied eight um notarized affidavits uh, that we, we serve the community. These affidavits are across the street from the property, adjacent to it. These aren't miles away. So obviously, we are, we are providing a service to the community and we've been there for forty-two years. Uh, this only arrived in the last um variance hearing uh during COVID that we ran into this situation. We are aware that there are issues. We've uh complied with everything we humanly, well, possibly can. And I'm there literally five days a week. And if there's any complaints, we haven't received any violations from the city, uh, Department of Traffic. Uh, we're on top of this. Believe me, we want these tenants and the community to continue to benefit from our services. You go to, I, I have a business where we do new car dealership work and they're getting two hundred and seventy dollars an hour labor. The people in that community can't afford to pay that. We're doing these things for probably a third or less uh and supplying this service to the community and we continue to for forty-two years. And the fact that the affidavits uh back up what we're saying should mean something. I know we had a couple of complaints, but I don't think they can distinguish between twenty-four sixty and ourselves. Uh, the property adjacent to us, the new building that went up, um, they park all over the sidewalk on Claritin, on Bedford. We've submitted pictures. I know that has nothing to do with this meeting, but these same people, they're not getting ticketed. So they continue to abuse the system and I can't, there's nothing I can do about that except secure our own property. And the video clearly shows the flatbed trailer unloading to twenty-four sixty and blocking our entrances on Bedford Avenue, creating a traffic jam. Buses need to go around. Um, so I'm not sure what I can do about that, but our property, those cones represent, we're not letting anyone double park in front of twenty-four sixty or possibly go on the sidewalk. So I'm, I'm doing everything like possibly can to, you know, keep the board happy and hopefully continue to let our tenants do business and serve the community for another forty years.
Yeah, thank you. And uh, again, um, I strongly, strongly recommend use your daily twenty-four seven video monitoring and use those video monitoring evidences with the community board whenever these issues come up.
Well, when we met, uh, can I speak? I'm sorry.
Because when, when somebody is watching a video, they know where the person is coming from, where the person is going to. And that clearly establish whether that person is coming from your facility or coming from the neighborhood or coming from somewhere else. For, a photo is a static photo. Video gives you a lot more clarity as to where the movement is happening, where the movement is going to.
Okay. And the affidavits uh with the adjacent uh tenants or residents of the area um basically support our claims somewhat.
We unfortunately cannot, we have no control on the adjacent residential use or the adjacent uh automotive use because.
No, no, no. I, I, I mean the affidavits that we submitted.
Letters of support.
Letters of support, I'm sorry.
We did receive them. We did receive them, yes. And, and you know, that speaks in your favor. Absolutely.
Okay.
We did read those, mentioned it at the hearing. Yeah. Okay, anyone else that he needs to speak, that needs to, okay. Thank you again. Um. Uh.
How much time do you need to submit?
Well, what are we submitting?
What are you, what are the?
She said you had to do a couple of statement of facts?
Um, I didn't hear that.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Oh, no, no, she, you did say you will update the cover letter and statement of fact, need extra time to clean up.
Oh, for that, yes. So I can, I can update that information about the conditions.
The outs of operation, yeah. Okay, good. I think I was missing.
Sorry, I, I.
Never, never, never question. Never, never, never question Ms. Mathias.
Okay, I just didn't know what, what we were referring to, but now I know.
That. So, okay. And I would again, please provide, clear this, what you're doing, monitoring and providing. Video surveillance is, is really one way to do that and monitoring it. There's no disputing it. You're staging it every day. That's kudos to you. Okay, any other questions or comments? I want to make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda? Vice Chair Shabeta? Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner, you.
All right, we will schedule it for decision. It would most likely be in May because you'll need the time to put the package together.
Okay, no problem.
You will have an update on the park, so you can also hold that into your submission.
Okay, item number?
I, I, before I.
Oh, sorry.
Can we take a five minute break, get a? Do you want to do a ten minute break and take this case or, because we still have?
Huh? Take the upcoming case, sir.
Take the upcoming and then take a break for lunch and then we come back, resume with the new cases and appeals. Yep.
Twelve, somebody mute, please. Item number twelve, one fifty six oh three BZ, one twenty seven fifteen BZ, one thirty five thirty five Northern Boulevard Queens.
Okay. Jessica. David. What's? I've let. You don't. Okay, who else? Jessica. I don't see anyone else.
David and.
You.
Oh, Ralph, Ralph, is Randolph Gerner part of your team?
Yes, he is.
Who? Randolph Gerner. Gerner, G E R.
Yep, I, yep.
Sorry for the pronunciation.
He's the architect. Yeah, okay, everybody's in. Okay. See that picture and then I could swear everybody in. Just need to see Randy.
Yes, okay, great. Okay, unmute, please. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your statement before this board? Sorry. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond only to the board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
All right, this is David Schnackenberg, Fred Frank, Kara Schreiber Jacobson for the applicant. Hi, everybody. So, um, thank you again. This is for some, some of the board. This is like the thirtieth time this case has been before you and we really do appreciate it. All of the, the time that's gone into this project. We heard the, the concerns and comments articulated this morning. We have a couple of points we want to discuss. And then obviously we're gonna, we're gonna work really hard to get you what you're asking for. Just, just so I can recap the comments and sort of table set. Commissioner Chanda, you discussed. Taking additional floor area deductions such that the overall floor area would be reduced below seven point five. So it was below the previously approved project. And Commissioner Ottley Brown, your comments. Were. Let's see, there were a few comments that you were pointing out. First of all, you pointed out, which we are aware of, that the delta between the approved and the proposed is pretty narrow. And that's a, sort of a curious position to be in for the board and certainly to ask the board, right, to say like this doesn't work and this does work. And so we want to discuss that. You also mentioned that, or pointed out that there were two new waivers, I think. There are no new waivers for the project, but we, but I, I think you were pointing out, I just want to make sure I've got, I'm addressing the right concern, that we are increasing the height and density of the building. Okay. Thank you. So just to state it on the record, there are no new waivers. We have increased density or we are asking to increase density. We are asking to increase height and we've eliminated the parking waiver. Okay, just want to make sure I understood that. All right, so let's, starting with the, the floor area deductions, if I may.
Can I just, I just see Mr. Kuzans's hand being raised. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Ben. Mr. Schackenberg, I just want to clarify, wasn't one of the waivers really a correction of the previous approval on the setback?
Thank you, Mr. Kuzans. One of the waivers that is new to the application is a correction for a waiver that exists the whole time. But that is not the waiver that Commissioner Ottley Brown was pointing out. There was the waiver for a rear yard when you were a hundred feet from the street. That has actually been around on the plans for four or five iterations, but, but it never got picked up. So no one has held us to account for that and we appreciate that because that is sort of a correction. But, but we, we don't pretend that we're not increasing the height or the density.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to make sure the record was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd love to say we'll take the easy one first, but there's really no easy ones on, on the floor area deductions. We, we heard you at the last hearing and we like worked really hard to get down to seven point five on the floor area using primarily. The deductions for the, the green building deductions, right, which are great ultra low energy. We're happy to be there. We stopped at seven point five for, for two reasons. The first reason is we thought that's what, what you wanted us to do. That was, it's always good to be able to stop when you get to where you think the end of the road is. But the other reason is that we are, we're very concerned. You know, this, this whole project exists in the margins, both financially and also in the square footage. We're, we are concerned that when we take these deductions under twenty three two thirty two, which we've looked at. That we not be too aggressive because the, the thing that we're super concerned about is getting to DOB. And finding out that the plan examiner doesn't agree with our interpretation of the deduction. So the one that we really wrestled with was the corridor deduction and whether we could take the whole corridor or we could take a part of the corridor. We don't have light at the, and Randy will speak more eloquently, but you know, we, we don't have. We don't have light at the elevator banks from legal windows. And so the question is, well, does that count for the deduction? And when we get to DOB, is DOB going to be, DOB going to say to us, I'm sorry, you don't have the deduction? And then we've got to come, and I, you guys know I love being here. And then we have to come back to BSA. And say, hey, you know, we, we can't build a seven point five FAR building. We need a seven point six FAR building because the deductions didn't work. And so we were as aggressive with the deductions as we thought was appropriate. And, and again, we did stop at seven point five because we thought that's where we needed to go, but we deliberately didn't take deductions that we thought there was any question about for that reason.
So, okay, I, I'll give you that one, that there could be a question that may raise, but I have. I, I think that this corridor, especially this, like for example. You can take the third floor because you're providing an access from the third floor to an outdoor area. The same, you've taken that same deduction for the fifth floor. So what applied to the third floor is the same thing.
Okay, so.
So, just simple ones, they're simple ones. Then there's storage. There are lots, every floor has storage space. There are a lot of amenities rooms that are proposed on the lower floors. Those are in the plan, so why aren't you taking those? So the ones that are very, very obvious, like the amenity, the storage, the, the corridor accessing the outdoor open area. You're replicating it, just use that, 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 I, I, I get that corridor maybe a question mark, but the other ones are very clear.
Okay.
Use those.
We will take a look at that and, and come back. Okay. So those are, those are the deductions. That was, we're sort of where we stopped. And, and again, to be honest, when we got to seven point five, we did stop because we were, we were there or we thought we were there. So I apologize.
True, but, but I did not know, right, at that.
No, no, of course. And, and you're seventy two.
Take all the deductions. And it seems it's good that the climate change gets you to our five, uh, seven point five. But the other deductions will get you below seven point five. And these are sure shot deductions. There's no DOB.
Understood, and we will, we will respond with that. Thank you. The, the next, let's see, were there any other points, Commissioner Chanda, that you wanted to discuss? It was tightening up the, the FAR. Okay, so I think the next questions are from Commissioner Ottley Brown. So. Six point two far, two four and six point five, super, super close. The reality, and this is something that we tried to call out in our papers, but maybe I didn't do it sufficiently. The six point two four percent building, it doesn't work for like more than, it's not just that it doesn't work on paper to pencil out. Like it doesn't work because of the parking, because of the queuing. I think as everyone sort of pointed out, like it's a, it's a better building. And so we're, we're here because we don't think the old building works. And so that's why we're amending the building. And so we're. That, that's why we've got these, like, these, these are very close buildings in terms of how they pencil out under the board's financial analysis. But the difference is that one building actually works and we've learned that the other one doesn't, which is sort of the, the purpose for us. Being here at all is that the, the PCOP, two thousand and five variants, two thousand and fifteen, sorry, two thousand and fifteen variants. It doesn't work. And so even if the, even if it was the same six point two four percent, we still don't think that we can build the other building. And that's sort of the whole genesis of, of why we're here now. I'll defer to Jessica on how, if at all, we can reflect that in the financial analysis, because I know we're constrained by the findings.
Think that a conversation here is going to really address the issues about the financials versus the buildability of the building. But what could work is what I discussed with the chair, which is that at least you're going to swap out. Some of your degree of waiver, so you can only argue that it looks as if the returns are very similar. But we won't be asking for a greater degree of waiver of these two issues without giving something in return. So that could almost be in a, an equivalence kind of argument that would result in a better building overall. Because I do agree that, that large parking structure is not a good design. And I think that you can, you don't need as much parking, so you could definitely do with a much smaller parking floor situation in the back. It's easier to build. It's probably a lot cheaper to build. So it is a better building, but still in all. The argument, the financial argument, it's just not enough. It's not going to get you there, simply because the returns are really close.
No, I understand.
Talking about the financials, we're not talking about a character argument or discussion. We're talking about the actual, the dollars and cents and six point two four to six point five seven. Both of those are feasible on paper. And so that's why we could have this conversation, but I'm not going to change my mind about on paper, the feasibility. Because usually with variance cases, something is clearly not feasible and your solution clearly is feasible. And that's not the case here because your numbers are telling a story where both of them are basically feasible.
We, we understand and we, we, we've really struggled with the numbers here, as you know. And, and we appreciate the, the ongoing dialogue and, and the, and the understanding of that.
You those allowances that I didn't even think should be in there to begin with. But I was granting you those allowances, given the fact that it was in previous reports.
And we, we appreciate that very much. We had thought that the elimination of the parking waiver might be enough to, to tilt the scale, but what I'm hearing is that it's not quite there yet, is, is, I think what I'm hearing from you.
Because, because of your numbers here. So to me, the easiest way for you to proceed would be to say, you know what? We asked for seven point five. In reality, we need seven point two five. And so therefore we're asking, can we at least have the extra floor? And can we have the extra few units?
Understood. Were there any other concerns from the commission that you'd like us to address? I believe those are the three things that were identified during the review session. But, you know, just to make sure we get everything out, was there anything further that you'd like us to, to address going forward?
No, I, I, I think we all are very sympathetic about this project and we understand the difficulty in developing this site. And we all feel that the project as proposed is probably by far the best we have seen. So, you know, with these little tweaks. And, and keeping the financial number as is, provided the FAR can be scaled down a little bit. With these deductions that are obvious, can be used, I think can get you there. That's, that's the read I'm getting. Definitely from Commissioner Ottley Brown has been very clear. And I, I think that should be done because if you don't need it, why keep it?
We hear you and we appreciate the, the feedback. Unless any of my colleagues, consultants have further questions. I think we'll let the commissioners get to lunch and we will jump on a call and work some of this out.
All right, any questions or comments for the team?
Okay.
Go to the public. Let's go to the public. And while we are waiting for the public to call in, let's discuss the timeframe.
The case that we're currently discussing, excuse me, is one fifty six oh three BZ and one twenty seven fifteen BZ, one thirty five thirty five Northern Boulevard Queens. Should you wish to comment, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hands at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you'll recognize, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
Okay. How much time will you need, Mr. Schnackenberg, to make the submission? I would like this to be the last submission because after it closes.
As, as would we. We, we can make the next submission available. We can, we, we can be very, very aggressive here. There's not too much room to do the work, so we're going to do it all as quickly as we can.
Okay, so my, I'm looking at the schedule. April will be difficult because then you need to make submission by next week and I don't want you to rush into this.
We, we, we are prepared to make a submission by next week. We, we've talked about it in the interim. If you'll, if you'll allow us to, we are prepared to make it next week.
How many, I just want to see how many finance cases do we have? Yeah, are you okay with it? We don't have, we have seventy two anyone's, but these are all single family and nonprofits.
Well, I know what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Put it that way.
Okay.
It's either going to be there or it's not going to be.
Okay, you heard. Okay, we will, we will schedule you for April.
So the April and submission date would be Monday, thirtieth?
Yeah.
It's coming Monday.
March thirtieth, sorry.
One week.
We can, we appreciate the opportunity and we will make the, yeah.
Okay, and yes, please just walk us through everything that has happened so that make, in your cover letter, letter, so that we know where, which page changes. And if you, I wonder, do we need to revise, you need to revise the statement of fact? So if you can provide a highlighted one, that would be helpful. This way we can quickly do the review.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're taking a break.
We are taking a half an hour lunch break because we have not eaten and it's past.
Yeah, just had some fruit.
I don't want my commissioners to fade on me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schnackenberg and your team.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a lunch break. We appreciate your patience. It's two ten at the moment, so two forty?
Two forty.
We will zoom at two forty. I'm sorry. Okay.
Uh, next case will be thirteen.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Other things are addictive.
Okay. To begin.
Whoops, oops, 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 miss my other second.
Okay. This will live more stream recording when we proceed with the the next phase of the public hearing.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March twenty fourth. Sorry, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, this type wrong. The first item up is new cases on the SOC calendar, five forty eight, sixty nine B Z volume five one oh seven dash ten Astoria Boulevard, Queens. Hiram Rothkirk.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Hiram Rothkirk.
Is anyone else joining you, Mr. Rothkirk?
No, just by myself today.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and respond to the board's comments at review session.
Hiram Rothkirk for Vassalati Associates. I attended review session and the first item I wanted to bring up is that we were contacted by BP several months ago and tasked with getting a new CO or extending the time to get a CO as well because no work had, no work had been completed. I don't really have an answer what happened over the last couple of years to give you, Madam Chair, other than to say several years ago BP purchased, made a large acquisition of a convenient, a Midwest convenience store company. And ever since that time, they've been in a state of reorganization and the people who retained us to get the new CFO are not the people we're dealing with now. So there's been a shuffling of personnel and possibly that's the reason why the CEO that nobody was attempting to get the CEO. But the specific reason and cause, I, I, I really can't, can't explain that for you.
I am just bit confused in terms of what we mean by enlargement because when I'm looking at the approved plan and what the building looks like present, isn't it almost the same or you're saying there was no expansion that was done?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For everyone.
Okay, yeah. Um, so you know, when I'm comparing it to the photos, the site photos and the previously approved plan, I'm not seeing much of a difference in the building size unless I'm misreading it. So I'm not sure what work needs to be done. Because there's like.
Well, I, I could give you. I will let you know right now. Just bear with me for a moment.
There's a building.
We need, we need to.
Yeah.
That approved at the building department and alteration, one no work application, administrative permit. Then we have to file a CFO application and then we need a construction inspection and sign off. And after the construction sign off, we request an electric and plumbing sign off from DOB. House number certification and then a request for a final CFO. So all of that work needs to be done on this site and, and another one coming up for the board next.
So my question is, you're saying there's no construction that has happened here?
No construction.
I guess maybe that's where I'm getting confused because I'm, as I'm looking at the building elevation and I'm comparing into the photo. It's the same place where the door is, where the windows are. So I'm looking at photo number four and comparing it to the elevation. So that's why I'm asking that question. Anyway, so I, I, I think think there's a confusion here and I would like you to clarify that. Because.
Carlos, hand us up. It's a Costanza.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I don't mean to make it even more confusing. I just, I'm going back to the the twenty twenty two filing, which was, I believe, just strictly for an extension of term.
Yeah.
I believe that.
I understand that, but I'm looking at the previously approved plans elevation and I'm comparing that to what I'm seeing on the photos. And the approved plan. Just not able to, where is it? When I'm looking at the approved plan, the building is just about thirty foot wide and fifteen foot, thirty foot long, fifteen foot wide. That's all it is. That's the proposal. And if you look at the photos, that's what it is seeming like. So I'm, I'm confused as to for the CEO is needed for what? To construct this thing which seems to be already built?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I, my understanding is that it's the the board condition that the new, obviously the certificate of occupancy expire with the terms, which at the previous twenty two filing was a request for the extension of term. And I guess there was some site improvement measures that were to be put in place, like say planting and the board conditioned that, that the CFO be obtained within eighteen months expiring in April seventeen twenty twenty four.
It's the proportion that has been submitted. It says storage shed was, storage shed was to be removed and was to be removed to construct a convenience store enlargement. I'm not seeing that. So there is a mismatch in what I'm visualizing, comparing it with the floor plan and what the statement of fact is stating. And this is what I mean, like there is a generalization of statements that has been carried over from one application to the other without it being specific to the site. So Councilman, what were you saying?
Well, it's a question of discrepancy between anything that was submitted in this iteration versus the last approval. This is an extension of time to complete construction, obtain a CEO. We shouldn't be approving any new plans if the board were to grant here.
Yeah.
And, and to the executive director's point, if there were, you know, minor set improvements to be made under the last approval requisite to get a CEO, has this site been operating out of compliance since the last grant?
Yeah, thank you. So so Mr. Rothkirk, please go back, look, look at what was granted, what has been built, what is outstanding? And again, are you asking for an extension of time or an extent or an amendment?
I think, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Rothkirk. If, if I may also just point your direction to the twenty sixteen filing. The twenty sixteen filing was an application for an amendment seeking to expand the existing convenience store at that time. So, Mr. Rothkirk, perhaps there's just some confusion between the various resolutions that somehow translated in your statement. that somehow translated in your statement?
Okay, I'll, I'll have to go back and check it.
Okay. Yeah. So please go through those and, and identify the reason for the delay specific to this site. Because I think maybe somewhere something is lost and and based on the changes, if anything needed, what, what is holding up the CEO and what is the timeframe to obtain the CEO? I mean, the extension is for an eighteen months, so which doesn't seem like it would be, you would need to construct anything. So it really has to be something very significant. Yeah. So I think your statement and the time allocated for this improvement is not matching. So please go back and look through all, everything and correct it and resubmit.
Okay.
Okay.
There was also a comment by Commissioner Sheta about, about making sure that the height of the poles was reduced to twelve feet.
Yes. Right. And please make sure that that has been done.
And if you were, if you have a luminous spread in the previous submission, the approved one, please submit it. If not, you don't have to submit anyone.
A what, a photo?
No, no, the, the luminous spread. I did look at the submission that you made for the previously approved plans. And I couldn't see a submission for a luminous spread. Well, I believe for a site like this, it should have been a submission there.
Again, it was it was a different applicant, it was a different applicant and different architect. And we asked the board for approved plans when we filed these applications with you. So if there wasn't a luminous spread plan included, we'll ask the board again to track their records. Otherwise, if there isn't one, there isn't one.
There is no luminous spread plan and, but I want to be, for the record, I want to be clear, we're not approving any plans set. We are just ensuring that it is complying with the approved plan set.
To an extent, this application continues to proceed as a simple extension of time to obtain a CO. And everything comports with the last approved set of drawings.
Yeah.
Then everything complies with the board's last approval, which shouldn't raise new concerns regarding luminous spread.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't think the, we did look through the complete set without the stamp and it did not have luminous spread. So there probably was not, and I believe the reason is what I stated earlier at the review session. The concern was the height of the poles and the height of the poles had to be reduced because the buildings are located at a higher elevation. The buildings, butting the residents are located at a higher elevation.
That's okay. Can you bring like a couple of photos for the, like poles reduced height?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Can you bring like three or four photos for that showing?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because the currently submitted, it doesn't seem to be like any reduction in the light pole height.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the public.
The case that we're currently discussing is five forty eight sixty nine BZ, one oh seven dash ten, Astoria Boulevard, Queens. Thank you, Jala. Should you wish to comment, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one, one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted it, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
How much time do you need, Mr. Rothkirk, to make these corrections?
A couple of weeks.
Okay, April is, we cannot review all of these additional submissions for April, so it will be May.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we'll schedule this for one of the May's.
Ready for the clock to run out?
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, nobody has raised time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, two fifteen oh six BZ, two oh two oh six Hillside Avenue. Raise your right hand. I have to swear you in again. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Hiram Rothkirk for Vassalotti Associates. At executive session, the chair board up, wondering whether the remediation equipment on site had been removed. And I think there was some planting that was conditioned as well.
Mm hmm.
There was also a question about a chain link fence, and I looked at all the photos and I'm not quite sure which fence you were talking about.
No, so what I said was that there was a remediation, remediation equipment that shed that was removed. And there was a fence that was enclosing that remediation equipment shed. And that has been removed. So at least from the photos, it seems it has been removed. What is not clear from the statement, if, if that has happened, nowhere in the document indicates that. So the statement of fact needs to clearly state that the remediation equipment shed has been removed and the fence enclosing that shed has also been removed. And and that area per plan, per approved plan, needed to be planted with grass. So this is a good time, otherwise, to start the planting process. So I just wanted to know what's the timeframe to get that done?
Well, I mean, you're, you're correct about the planting. I mean, we could, we could schedule that and you know, I'm sure we could have everything done by May if we could have the same hearing date for the other item.
Okay, great.
Want a revised statement of facts?
And need a revised statement of facts.
Correct.
Okay. And also need to provide a compliance chart of the prior board conditions. Okay.
Not a problem.
Okay, are we, let's go to the public.
The case that we're currently discussing is two fifteen oh six BZ, volume five, two oh two oh six Hillside Avenue, Queens. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one, one six nine, two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the prompt after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as if you're, as you're calling in on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room or ready, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. And once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Also, again, it's not clear what it just, the statement is an extension of time. It doesn't request how many years or months. And yeah, and I don't know the steps that you would need to obtain the CEO. So please do indicate how much of a, how much time you need to obtain the CEO.
Absolutely. I'll give a, I'll give a chart of each, each item and what our anticipated dates are with those.
Yeah, so provide timeline to complete the steps.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
I'm okay.
Close. Yeah, let's go to the public, right?
No, we're almost finished. Oh, Jesus.
All right. All right, I'm going to make a motion to close, but the records will, will be kept open for you to submit revised statement of facts, timeline. And, and in that specifically talk about the amount of time you need to get to the certificate, to get the CEO and what are the steps that are outstanding that needs to be done? And also plant the grass. Okay?
Yeah.
The grass planted before we vote?
Yeah, weather is perfect if it's going to be in May.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to close?
Motion to close, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rothkirk.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, thank you, Mr. Rothkirk. Item number fifteen, two thirty five fifteen A and two fifty nine fifteen A, Eight Cornell Lane, Queens.
This would be Alexia?
Alexia.
Yep.
Good afternoon, Ms. Landsman. Please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments. This is an appeals case and you don't need to be sworn in.
Oh, okay. Good afternoon. My name is Alexia Landesman on behalf of the applicant. We have attended the executive session and heard the board's comments with regards to the zoning chart. We will make that correction with a decimal and we'll make it point three five F A R. We will revise the, the compliance chart. With regards to the TCO, we will, I will let the architect know to go back to DOB to add the restrictive deck onto the TCO. And then finally, we are happy to submit a DOB sheet showcasing that there's no violations on the site. Finally, there was a conversation with, with regards to the timeframe and the boards. It's, it's the board's discretion to allow as much or as little time as they'd like. And so with that, we, we will defer to the board.
Yep. Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Let's go to the public.
So the case that we're currently discussing is two thirty five fifteen A and two fifty nine fifteen A, Eight Cornell Lane, Queens. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one, one six nine, two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted, I'm sorry, once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
How much time will you need to make this correction?
I think we can probably have it by next week.
Okay. April.
So May, March thirtieth submission?
Yeah, March thirtieth submission. Okay. So I want to make a motion to close.
Chair, Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Item number sixteen, twenty twenty four eighty four BZ, sixty one sixty one Emerson Place, Brooklyn. This is Howard Goldman.
Okay.
You let him in, right?
Yes, I have. He stood in there. I thought I did.
No, his hand wasn't, it disappeared from the thing. No, it's still there.
Is he, he's still there?
Yeah, it says Howard Goldman still.
Mr. Goldman, are you in the room?
Here we go. Well, no, he was, it was sitting there. He raised his hand.
Is that better? I see myself, so it must be better. All right, let's start again. Good afternoon, Chair Shonda, Vice Chair Shabeta, Commissioners. My name is Howard Goldman. I'm representing.
The Goldman, I have to swear you in.
Why? Oh, swear me in, by all means.
Swear in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Howard Goldman, representing the Institute for Community Living. With me today or available to join the call are Greg White, the project manager for ICL and Diane Leibes, who is a planning and development specialist at this firm, Goldman Harris. The two questions raised at this morning's review session.
Ben, do we need to, do I need to?
Do they need to be here?
Do they need to join?
Only if there's a question that, that, you know, they should weigh in on.
Right. Yeah, I don't think so. I, I think we go ahead. If they're needed, we will swear them in.
Yeah. The first question concerned demolition permit for the vacant building on the premises. An application for a demo permit was filed last month. And it was resubmitted last week after an older boiler violation was removed. The building is vacant. The second question concerned an outdoor trash area. And I think the reference was to photo number three, view number three. We don't see any trash area on that view. But there was a dumpster on the property when the former residents were being relocated. That has now been removed. Under the plans that were approved by the board in twenty twenty two, the new building will fully cover the lot. It will have a refuse room on each floor and a compactor room on the first floor. And that addresses the two questions.
Okay. All right, great. Let's go to the public.
The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty, twenty twenty eighty four BZ, one sixty one Emerson Place, Brooklyn. Should you wish to one sixty-one Emerson Place, Brooklyn. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. No submission.
It's taking forever to get through.
Yeah, it's taking a long time. Yeah, the system is slow today.
Probably the rains.
It is. I think um while we're waiting for the clock to run out, just, just as a good neighbor and I am, I will no doubt uh believe that uh your um rev client is a good neighbor, has been. Um, and so during the demolition and post demolition, should the site remain vacant for any foreseeable future, please ensure that the site remains clean and chained and secured, so uh it's not an eyesore to the community.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, nobody called in. Uh. I'm going to make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
And uh decision will be April.
April seventh. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Appeals calendar continued hearing items, item number seventeen, twenty twenty-three forty-one A through forty, forty-seven A. This is Long Street in the Bronx.
I don't see Mr. Dale. Is he here?
There he is.
There he is. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, state your name for the record, Mr. Dale. This um is an appeals case and you don't need to be sworn in.
Good afternoon, Todd Gail for the applicant. Uh, I did listen to the review session this morning and very much appreciate the chair's summary of the submission and the events of the case. Uh, I don't believe there were really any other substantive issues to discuss. Um, the only thing that I would just supplement, uh Chair, um what you said is that I know there were been concerns raised by the local community and community board. Um, and I appreciate the concerns. Um, you know, just to summarize, this really is a threshold application. And it is not going to replace any other required review that would also be required of as a right buildings. And I would just note that this proposal does include significant investment by the property owner above and beyond what's required to improve Long Street Avenue in front of these buildings to the full thirty-foot width. Um, and that there's also this separate pending application to extend the sewers and water mains. And that I know that, you know, there were concerns raised about flooding. But you know, these buildings will have to meet all flood requirements as reviewed by D O B. But we're of the belief that the significant investment that's taking place to widen the street, to improve the street, which is essentially a dirt road now, and to extend the the existing sewers and water mains um would only help uh some of the concerns, help address some of the concerns that have been raised by the community. And that, you know, the investment that's being made here is not just to the buildings, but the the local infrastructure and uh very well might help mitigate some of the issues that have been raised by the local community. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Uh. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, let's go to the public.
The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-three forty-one A through forty-six A, Long Street Avenue, the Bronx. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will compress the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if in the Zoom room already wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. Um, do you want to take this gentleman's testimony first before Ms. Kelly?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, she come up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your patience. Really appreciated.
No, you don't have to be sworn in.
Okay. So Madam Chair.
First, please put up, state your names.
Hi, my name is Frank Mandazzo and I live in Locust Point, the area where this is uh being done as a small community, one road in, one road out. You've heard all of that. And I've, my family's up there since the nineteen thirty's, so almost a hundred years. Many, I could think a couple of people on the phone uh also have long histories there. Um. Thank you all for hearing from me. Adam Chair and Mr. Vice Chairman, when you were appointed, the press release that City Hall put out, a notifying, said that the Board of State and Appeals hears individual applications for exceptions and changes to zone regulations and may restrict specific properties where a broader change to the zoning text and method is unnecessary. And I'm going to tell you that this is a case where a broader change to the zoning in this spot is absolutely one hundred percent necessary. For many of the reasons you've heard, I sent in a letter, they've said they've heard a lot of stuff. But as an engineer, but space intimately, I grew up hunting, hunting, fishing, fishing on it, uh hanging out and learned to smoke my cigarettes, kid. Uh, and as we've been listed to generations. Um, so what I'm saying is this piece of land is slightly high. It grades up like that and it's thick, thick brush and and but it's not officially maybe wetlands, but it is a area. And then the, and then Young Street, Glenon, and the houses that are on the north side of Glenon, low. If a sewer is extended into this area, that sewer, what happens when it's flooding, it's the sewers back up, water doesn't come, it comes from the sewers. It's a, the sewer lines, it's a very little area because I always lived there, my father was there, my mother still is. My grand, my grandmother lived there, twelve siblings and cousins are there. But I want to live with it and want to live with it so we can. This developer is going to invite, the development as it stands is going to invite, um, I think a flooding issue there that's going to be a real problem. And the reason that it's going to be a real problem is not that, oh, nobody can withstand flooding except Frank Mandazzo. The reason it's going to be a problem is because this house isn't really going to be rented to people who don't know what's going to happen and are going to be completely caught off guard. They're sold on some sunny day, it was worth front property to somebody who doesn't know what's going to happen, and then they're going to be caught off guard. And it's going to be a disaster for them. And it's going to cause, really, the major problem is it's going to cause flooding downhill. And this real point to that, the other side of the street is also unapproved. So if you're coming up Long Street Avenue, if you were to continue, I think the way you described it as the west side on the east side. The east side of Long Street Avenue, as it goes past Glen, is unapproved glass. It's just to for the yards. Are they going to build sidewalks and sewer catchment uh drains and unapproved strip, maybe for the houses over there? That's a whole other set of sidewalk that has to be built. And I don't know if the plans include building a sidewalk across the street. Number two, this is a I, I, I'm at the point now where we're asking, people are asking for easements into mapped city streets. I mean, this is a big request. This is not only that Long Street Avenue is now going to have an encroachment on it. And by the way, that's a street that we've asked to be completely opened up so that we'd have another access point out of the community. I'm old enough to have lived there from, you know, the, the glory start of ninety-two and the my friend, my friend, the storm of sixty-nine. I was two and a half years old in nineteen sixty-nine and bus got stuck on that road and we, nobody could get it out for a day or two. You know, it is one, there used to be an access road to the toll plaza of the, of the um but it's like, isn't anymore. So that's the only word in that, that that accident, this road was a long time ago, when the toll plaza was widened. This is the one that's been out. City should actually open that whole street, make it a straight, a quote-unquote straight shot to be able to go out and come in. There shouldn't be one developer and and six houses is going to, there's, I can't believe there's from the zoning standpoint, there's, there's room for six houses on that six units, I guess, three, maybe three houses, um, a two-family house. They're going to have to be exceptionally high off the ground. I know they're going to meet high requirements, it's a right, it's not a zoning per se, a floor area issue because they've given the plans in. But that, those houses are just going to, hasn't been a six-house development in that area in my they're certainly not, if somebody builds a two-family house, that's big news. Uh, that's really big news. So three two-family houses is tremendous news. And it's asking a lot of the sewers and the roads there, and it's asking a lot of what's going to have, I think the downtown neighbors are going to have some issues. And so what do I have to say? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd just like to state two things for the record. One, um.
No, no.
Thank you, just, just generally, thank you. Um, whether or not anybody, this board included thinks that Long Street should be opened up to its full width. Um, this uh applicant's client does own a portion of that street and and the city has not filed or funded a capital improvement program to open it up to its full width. Uh, second, um, nothing that this applicant or its developer or client um can do, uh, yeah, nothing that they can do will override or skirt um building code regulations with regard to flood or uh flood safety. Um, what, when this property inevitably gets sold, it doesn't matter what the weather or the day is, uh, this building will withstand. It it'll be built to a code that should withstand any day of the week. Um, Councilmember Mar Marado is uh in the waiting room.
Oh.
If we'd like to.
Oh, I did not know that. Yeah, I, I should have been informed of that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have.
I apologize.
Member waiting then.
Hi, everybody. I'm just, I want to thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I actually just jumped on and raised my hand. Um, just going to cut down to it. Um, I remain committed to ensuring that the people, that Locust Point gets the capital improvements it needs. I have already committed to and will continue to commit to securing the necessary funding for road improvements, which will connect Long Street Avenue on the Throggs Neck side to the Locust Point side, whether through direct capital allocations or by working to gather additional resources with my partners in government. I'm working along deal with the Department of Transportation and my own budget and resources to ensure that we can provide the proper capital resources for the access. And I just hope that you really take this into consideration and, you know, make the right decision for my community. This is something that we have been speaking about within the last few months. It's something that the community really wants. They want to open the access. I've heard about safety and security concerns. Um, like the gentleman prior had mentioned, when the bus was stopped and stuck and they couldn't have access in and out of Locust Point. So I feel like this is something that will ensure the safety of the people of Locust Point. And I thank you for your time and I thank you for listening to me.
Um, Councilmember, my apologies. I did not know you were in the room. We generally allow. Oh, John later on, okay. But thank you again for your participation and your continued uh pursuit to uh look after your constituents. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, great. And again, I'm committed to helping and providing the capital improvements through my own budget and with my partners in government. So thank you.
Thank you. And and I think I want to, everybody as they're listening in, um, I was just looking at the site. So the street width is mapped to a depth of eighty foot. Uh, forty foot of it is already in private ownership and the remaining is in city ownership, but city has to acquire the remaining forty foot, which is the privately held portion of the land uh to build out the street bed. What the building of the street bed would do, it is like building a city street, but it won't be built by the city. It would be built by the private developer. They would have to submit a builder's pavement plan to D O T and it has to meet all the D O T requirements for uh and it will operate at as a city street, open to public. And will have to meet um all the construction standards. And same thing with D E P with regards to flooding and other things. The D E P is well aware of the requirements and all the sewer water lines and other improvements would have to factor in the load demand and other generated from not only from this demand, uh, this site or whatever would be required, but that is D E P's review. That is not our strength. D E P reviews it. D E P will review that and ensure that the required um amount of um infrastructure is put in to accommodate the load uh that is needed. So we are just facilitating the developer to build on a portion of its property that city never took ownership of. In return, the developer will be building the road to the city standard and provide the connection that so much the community is asking from, at least if not for the entirety of Long Street, but at least for the portion that they own, which is from Glenon to Hattie. And that is the section that would be open to public roadway built in uh and uh you won't have a bus that'll be stuck in the mud. It will roll right through the asphalt. So that's really how, that is the limit to which we can facilitate um this action. Beyond that, everything is going to be the requirements as stated out. Nothing is going to be um modified by our board.
Yeah, we just have, we have concerns about the F D M Y recommendations if we did open the portion of Long Street up, if we extended it from the Throggs Neck side to the Locust Point side. We don't feel like that there would be a F D M Y fire truck or E M S will be able to get through the street if it is an emergency service road.
So the property owner owns the portion of the land of Long Street between Glenon and Hattie and not between Hattie and Chaffey. That is totally under city ownership. So property owner has indicated that they are more than willing to have the city consider building out that portion, um, but it is not in the property owners. And then all the buildings are facing Hattie and the intersection of Hattie and Long Street and and Long Street. So the access point to all of these buildings are going to be from these streets and not from Chaffey.
Right, but even if we opened up Chaffey to Hattie, once we, you hit Hattie, you're not going to be able to access the road. Like a fire truck is not going to be able to go. They're going to have to go down Hattie Avenue to go around.
Uh, okay, uh, uh, unfortunately, if if the envision is to build uh Long Street to the full width, then city will have to acquire it and there's no capital improvement plan for that. And we therefore cannot hold back.
Well, I'm, what I'm saying is I've, I've committed to my own uh capital budget to to uh work with the D O T to do that. We haven't in the process just yet, but this is a commitment that I'm telling you that we have made. We are in talks with D O C T currently about this.
Uh, I mean, so Mr. Dale, you're hearing that your client might be entitled to just compensation for a portion of their property if the city effectuates a taking for that portion. Uh, you can decide to proceed with the application knowing that, given that there's not a funded filed capital improvement program. Um, but, you know, six of one, half a dozen of the other, if if that happens today, or if it happens ten years from now, um, our understanding is that just compensation entitlement is the same.
I understand and I appreciate that. I think there's still maybe some confusion on the part of, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak now. I know it's the public session. Um, I don't know what the procedure is, but um, you know, I just want to clarify something. Is it possible for me to share my screen for a second for those who are at the hearing?
Yes.
All right, so let me share. I just want to you can tell me, is that showing the Google map right now, the overhead view?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that this portion right here, which is where the building is.
Can you zoom in?
Sure. I was gonna go out a little bit, but this Long Street, which is the current sort of dirt road access here. This is what this private property owner is proposing to improve to a width of thirty feet. And I just want to make it clear for the record that this is privately owned property right now. But in response to Fire Department's question, normally you would legally only be required to improve to the center point of Long Street Avenue plus five feet. This property owner has agreed to take on a significant added expense of improving this to a thirty-foot width from Glenon up to Hattie here. So I think this actually works in conjunction with what the councilwoman is talking about. This is the private owner who's proposing to build this out at private cost to city standards. It would need to be reviewed by DOB and DOT and all partner agencies. But this portion would get improved and it would create at least half the access that's talked about. This portion here between Chaffey and Hattie involves sites that are not under the property owner's control. So if the councilwoman is seeking to get this opened, you know, we wouldn't object. We think that that's a good idea. But we would say that this proposal, and I appreciate the community's concern and the councilwoman's input, but you're having a situation here where instead of having to fight for city funds to improve two blocks worth, you now only need to approve one block worth because you have a private owner who's willing to improve this portion. So I think that half the battle is being taken on through what was hopefully an approvable, or excuse me, an approval of this application. So we don't think this is working against that. We think this is working towards that and is actually of benefit to the city because you have the private developer contributing the funds to build at least half of this two-block portion. So I just want to make that really clear. But as also uh, Council of I noted, you know, that this application be designed or uh, denied or pending what's happening with the capital plan process, that the city would need to pay to acquire uh, the 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 property here. But we've believed that that shouldn't be necessary because you're still gonna get a thirty-foot road here met to all city standards. So I just wanted to.
And what has the um, FDNY FDNY recommended?
Well, as far as the FDNY, the one thing, everything here with the FDNY, all these buildings are gonna be sprinkled. This is going to meet.
Access with a fire truck is what I'm talking about.
Oh, so the fire truck. So the concern about the fire department is that this turnaround here, this is going to be to a thirty-foot width. And again, this goes back to when Inspector Daly was here um, on the board and they originally said, can we'd like this to be thirty feet and the property owner agreed to take on that cost. The one request of the fire department, which was forwarded that can't be done for legal and ownership reasons is they wanted to have the opening between Chaffey and Hattie, that portion of Long Street Avenue. And two things, one, none of the homes that are being proposed here front on that area. But two, a portion of that is actually city property owned by DCAST or it's privately owned by other property owners. So it's not really subject to this application and this property owner doesn't have access to that. So we don't dispute, you know, the fire department's request. Um, and we really can't make any comment, but it's not something this property owner can can do or control because they're not, they're not the title holder to that. So again, we wouldn't object to it. And we think if the city wants to do that and you're able to get the funds for this, we think that's a great idea. But what our proposal is, would provide safe access to these buildings. It would actually improve access to all of these buildings over here on the west side of this portion of of this community because you're having this street improved, which is currently just a dirt road. So you know, everything that's being done here meets the fire department.
But if you build out onto the street like you're saying, isn't it gonna be, Long Street gonna be misaligned?
No.
With the current?
No.
Can can we wait to see if we can get fire fire department approval or like at least another recommendation from the FDNY?
I would say that the fire department, everything in the fire code is meant by this. Everything. The one thing is that if you have a thirty-foot wide road, the fire code says the building do be sprinkler. These buildings are going to be sprinkler. And what you're doing is you're moving from right now, which is approximately like an eight to twelve-foot dirt road, is now gonna be a thirty-foot curved curb, open street. So it's like nearly doubling the current access. It's gonna make it a paved road instead of a dirt road and it's allowing a path right now that fire trucks could not go down that path now. Pursuant to this proposal, they would be able to go down this road. So.
But there's nothing currently built there. So that's why they're not gonna access that road. But it's just concerning that I don't think that sprinklers would just be enough for the area.
Well, then, with all due respect, that's the law and this is above and beyond. And you have a private property owner who's taking on significant added expense to improve this road. And if, you know, as you said, you're seeking to improve the access here, you have a private property owner who's basically halving the cost of what the city would need to do in order to prove this. So it's a, I would say it's a win-win situation because there's less requests than of the city and you're gonna have a head start on improving this access. But I wanted to share that just to clarify for those who can see this.
Just want to jump in um, on something that you said. You don't have ownership or control over the portion of Hattie to Chaffey. This board also doesn't have before it any jurisdiction over that portion of roadway. Um, illustrative of your point is if there were presumably a capital improvement plan filed and funded for that portion of unimproved roadway from Hattie to Chaffey. Presumably that wouldn't even prevent this board from hearing this application on the portion of Long Street.
Yes.
Agreed.
We we have um, Ann Kelly at the waiting room. I'm not allowed to speak.
Oh, so council.
Thank you, councilmember.
On camera.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi, yeah, I'm Ann Kelly. I guess um, we're not on camera here. So I'm here at at the Locust Point Civic Association and I'm here with many of my neighbors that are here that are also concerned. I I hear what you guys are saying, but I I just wanted to stress here how much, you know, the community is not really for this project and we hear the things that are being said, but most of it is to the property owners um benefit and not to the rest of the communities. And if we're, you know, bringing in these um, these buildings and they're gonna connect to already overstressed sewer system that we have here, this is gonna be a huge problem for us. I just wanted to reiterate that to you guys, um, whether that's in your purview or not, but I also have some other members here that would like to to speak. So I have Joe Donovan, who's the current vice president, if he could speak for a few minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
If you could. Hello, my name is Joe Donovan. Uh, I'm vice president of Locust Point Civic. I don't know if you can see me. I can't, uh, I don't know, we're up on the screen. Um, yes, I lived in Locust Point my entire sixty-one years. Uh, I know this neighborhood very well. I uh, thank you for the the review session. It brought me up to date with your particular scope with regard to this project. And uh, it it's obviously this uh, easement. Um, the easement um, as what 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 the developer is looking for. If that is approved, the community will never be able to get what it desires, which is a full width development of Long Street from Glenon to Chaffey. So the entrance to Locust Point would give it, give us the the relief that we need. Now, um, having said that, even the proposed street uh, that that has been produced by the developer uh, would be completely misaligned with the current Long Street Avenue. I was out there this morning. Long Street Avenue measures fifty feet wide uh, before Chaffey. It measures fifty feet wide beyond Chaffey, beyond Glenon. Uh, it uh, it goes down to on the side streets on average thirty to thirty-two feet on existing side streets. Now, I want everybody to know that um, years ago, the Throggs Neck Bridge had a service road that went completely around the roadway and it would um, it would allow them to access the bridge from both sides. Now, they currently only have one service road that has to go through Locust Point. We are constantly, constantly bombarded with commercial traffic. Uh, this bridge is now coming up on sixty-five years old. It it's constantly being renovated. They bring in commercial traffic along with big steel members and things that are very often staged on Long Street Avenue to be brought to the bridge. Now, this clogs up our community sometimes at the point of blocking off streets, making them inaccessible to emergency vehicles for a period of time. We need Long Street open. Now, it has been requested in the past. I know it hasn't been in the last ten years, as mentioned. But in the seventies, uh, my mom uh, actually brought to my attention that um, a neighbor, two doors down, I remember this happening, uh, he he had a heart attack. They called an ambulance. Thirty minutes later, no ambulance arrived. Couldn't get into Locust Point thanks to the congestion coming, blocking our neighborhood on the Throggs Neck Bridge. My mom put that man into a car. He died on his way to the hospital. She fought very hard back in the seventies to try and get that street open. It never happened. In the in the mid-seventies, uh, the city was almost bankrupt. So it couldn't happen then. That's what she was told. Now, I don't want a similar thing to happen today. Uh, I'm a retired firefighter. I I know I know that seconds count when responding to an emergency. We need this street open. It can, it can happen and it should happen. So I really appreciate you uh, taking my testimony into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, you can put it in writing, right? You can put it in writing. Sorry. Uh, anyone else?
Anyone else from the Civic Association, Ms. Kelly?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is John Corrine. I'm the president of the Locust Point Civic Association. I've also lived here for almost all of my sixty-one years. I talk to a lot of people uh, around the neighborhood and we have a lot of functions down here at the Civic and it obviously comes up in uh, in conversation. And uh, I can tell you, there is nobody that is in favor of this project down there. I understand that it's privately owned owned land and it's not our decision if we, it's gonna get built or it's not gonna be built, but there is nobody that is in favor of this project over there. We have a terrible problem with flooding as it is. This has been mentioned in prior meetings. Uh, when there's a moon tide, the water comes right out onto uh, Glenon Place. When we have a really bad rainstorm, there'll be a foot of water on Long Street Avenue. Um, and and it comes halfway, it comes three or four houses up on Glenon Glenon uh, Glenon Place. And uh, we think this is just gonna exasperate all of that. I understand the uh, the new owner, who we still to this day, we don't know who it is, we've never met him, uh, he's gonna put, he's gonna rectify the uh, the sewer and out of his own pocket to to try and accommodate everything. But we feel that if you're gonna build six two-family houses over there, that could potentially have how many people in over there, that is gonna overload our current uh, sewer systems over here and we're gonna deal with even more flooding. This place was underwater on uh, in Hurricane Sandy. There was people going by on uh, on Long Street Avenue. I know that's a long time ago now, but there was rowboats going back and forth on Long Street Avenue. And that current property is is like a buffer for any potential storms that could, that that come. The swamp land over there just soaks up all the water so that doesn't come into Glenon Place and and Hattie Place. So uh, I don't know what we what we can do about this, but we, there was nobody that I know here at Locust Point uh, that is in favor for this project, that feels it would benefit Locust Point in any way, shape or form. And like I said, I didn't just move in a year or two ago. I'm sixty-one years old. That's my good friend, also Joe Donovan. And uh, so we know what we're talking about here in Locust Point. I understand that the gentleman is willing to uh, at his own expense, build the street out and pave it and all of that, but that's gonna, on any given day besides that, uh, there's twelve to thirteen cars parked in in that dead end. This is just a side note. And when you're gonna add another twenty-five or thirty cars in that new project over there, it's gonna be absolute gridlock. Uh, adding to the all the congestion that we have here in Locust Point already. The bridge is constantly being painted. There's buses, uh, the the workers get onto buses over here. They go out onto the bridge. There's there's constantly um, MTA cars, there's police cars, there's ambulances, there's everybody. So I think you understand where we're coming from on this. Okay? Uh, and I thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Are we done?
Yep. I don't see anybody's hands, right?
Okay, okay. Thank you, everybody. And I'm gonna make um, we're just waiting.
Noel, can you do me a favor? There is a question for the.
Can we move him? Can we move him? Sorry.
You're making a motion, chair.
Okay, so all we're waiting for, since we have the capital improvement plan uh, and there isn't anything that is planned in the area, uh, I am comfortable with this knowledge to close the application. But we need to get a um, we just need uh, just a couple of things ironed out, more or less the application as it was required by Fire Department. The width of the street, um, they're all there uh, to meet the emergency requirements and other fire code requirements. And um, so I want to make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner. Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye. I want to thank everybody, um, you know, from uh, our council member, from the community for voicing your concerns. Unfortunately, GCL is one of those cases where we have to go by strictly the legislative text and the requirements. Uh, and uh, and what we are asked to do is to just to verify if there's a capital improvement plan. When there is none, at the time when the project is being built, uh, the board um pursues, uh, is required to almost issue an approval. There isn't an alternative. Uh, otherwise, we will be challenged to litigation and we will fail. Uh, so we'll be back to square one. Uh, however, as Mr. Dale pointed out, what this would achieve is a street that would at least be built, if not of the entire length of Long Street from Glenon to Chaffey, part of it will be built and a new will be built to the uh, DOT standards and DEP standards. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number nineteen, item number eighteen has been adjourned.
Yep.
Item number nineteen, twenty twenty-four seventeen A, thirty-five Marjory Street, Staten Island. So Elise Foladere?
I think she should be in the room.
Yeah.
Oh, no, she stepped out. Okay, all right. I've been letting her in.
Okay. Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Sorry, it's getting dark in this everywhere because it's a rainy day, so it's hard to see. Um, Elise Foladere from Eric Palanick PC. Thank you so much. Um, we heard your comments and it seems like we responded accordingly. Did you have any comments you wanted us to specifically address that I'm missing?
I just want um, to make.
You wanted a letter, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we are happy to give that letter um, in a submission. No problem.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your patience. Thank you. Thank.
Long day. Blanked it out.
Okay, all right. Um, and this information um, will be forwarded to Fire Department.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
It was public?
Uh, let's go to the public.
So the case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-four seventeen A, thirty-five Marjory Street. Should you wish to comment on this application? Dial six six nine two five four five two five two. Enter the webinar ID number one six one one six nine two seven one five and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if in the Zoom room we're ready, please raise your Zoom ham which is little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, we'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
Once you're recognized, we'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
It's, isn't we, aren't we past the two-minute point?
No, fourteen seconds.
Almost done. Right? Like you wanted to move. Okay. Um I'm going to make a motion to close. We'll wait for Fire Department um to respond to the submissions you we will be making. Uh I think everything that is submitted along with that letter uh should, will be, should be shared with Fire Department.
No problem.
Motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shata?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Okay. Uh there being no other business, this concludes the public hearing for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you one and all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.